This conference will now be recorded.
The number two is considered for approval, the zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Anybody have any actions additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the December fourteenth, twenty twenty zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes.
I make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
I'll abstain since I wasn't there.
Abstained, okay. Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero with one abstention. Public hearings and action items three one, hold a public hearing and consider a variance request from section four point three point six of chapter fourteen of the zoning ordinance to allow a storage building to be built in front of the primary structure on a residential lot described as lot twenty four, block four, Hugh White Estates within the city of Hazlet, Texas, more commonly known as twenty two sixteen Virginia Lane. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This request came to us back in December. The applicant was put in a permit for a swimming pool and on the site plan for the swimming pool, it showed a proposed storage building. Staff worked with the applicant, figured out what the applicant was desiring to do in that location, and that's why the request is before you today. The ordinance states, as already stated, that you cannot put an accessory structure forward of a primary structure on a residential lot. So the applicant stated that his intention was to construct the storage building to serve as a storage for the proposed pool that he's in the current process of building. As y'all know, there's state law lays out for criteria for granting a variance, and what I'll do is I'll just go through those, outline those as they're outlined in the staff report. The first criteria is that the variance can't be contrary to public interest. Just a little bit of background, it's a common provision in most accessory building ordinances that you cannot put a accessory building forward of the primary structure. Primary reason for this is primarily just aesthetics. Typically, your your storage buildings, particularly your primary structure of the building is your is your most well-maintained, best-looking building, so you kind of want that up front and you want the other buildings behind. The applicant, in this case, the applicant has provided renderings of what he's proposing the building to look like, and he's using the same materials, same design features as the primary structure. The second criteria is that the the request isn't due to a special or is due to a special condition on the property. Typically, these are characteristics of the property such as the shape of a lot or maybe topography. In this case, the applicant has provided documentation that the if he were to move the storage building to the behind the house, it would possibly conflict with drainage that's existing on the site and may add more drainage problems to his neighbors to the south. The applicant provided some detail, and then we've got some topography information if council would like to see that. The third one is the that the literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The the storage building in question could be built in a lot. He's got, I believe, the lot is five acres in size, so clearly he could put the storage building somewhere else. However, the intended purpose of the storage building would really not meet his his demands or his request. And then the fourth one is the spirit of the ordinance is observed. As already stated, primary reason as to why you have a accessory building behind the primary building is for aesthetic purposes. The applicant's provided rendering showing what he's proposing would look like, and so we don't believe or staff does not believe the spirit of the ordinance would be neglected in this case. Staff recommends approval of the variance with two conditions, one that the building be constructed in location shown on the site plan, and then second that the elevation that it be built in compliance with the elevation shown in the building material shown. Just as a point of reference, I think you all know this by now, but since this is a variance request, it requires a super majority to to approve, meaning that four out of the five of you would have to vote in favor of it for it to be approved. I can answer any questions that you have.
Council, what I'd like to do is if Travis has anything to add to the drainage comments that are made to to give staff's view on that, Wes said he thought it was correct. I just wondered if Travis, if you had a chance to look at that? Travis isn't here. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this variance?
Travis is on the call.
I think Travis just joined us.
Okay, public hearings opened for a second anyway. Let's put a temporary close on the public hearing. And Travis, did you hear my question?
I'm sorry, I didn't. I was having an internet issue, so I just got on.
Okay, on the BOA issue before us, there there's a picture, a depiction of the drainage and how if we put the or if the if the applicant put this utility building behind the house that that might adversely affect the drainage and affect the neighbor to the south. And I just wondered if you'd had a chance to look at that, and if you have any comments you'd share with us on that if you have.
Yes, so I did look at that. I brought up the contours I have in GIS, and the applicant is correct. If they were to place that shed behind the structure, they're actually redirecting flow, which is not something you want to do. So where they've got it placed, the proposed location is the best location concerning drainage.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing again. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposed variance?
Hey, I'm Jason. I live at twenty two sixteen, so I figured I'd jump on if anybody had any questions for me.
Okay, thank you, sir. And anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, this time I'll close the public hearing on to discussion. Council, if you had any questions and or Jason, all I need you to do is just hold up your hand or holler, and I'll recognize you if you want to respond to anything that anybody asks. Council?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Hillborn. I have a question for the applicant. Would you consider doing some screening in front of that building? The photograph that we have shows that it looks like your primary structure is is screened behind possibly some trees. Would?
Well, the interesting thing, the interesting thing about this this screenshot that he's got pulled up right now is that my house is actually about eight hundred feet from the street, and I'm proposing to put this building, it's only about ten feet in front of my house in terms of like in relation to Virginia Lane. So it's basically adjacent to my house, but it sits back, I don't know, like seven hundred and seventy feet from the street. So that building's kind of going to look like a dot back there where he's got that yellow box. It's going to be pretty small, but it's going to basically look like my house. It's I'm going to do I'm going to do rock on the bottom, some gray siding plus some, you know, wood tongue and groove. So as far as anyone's concerned on the street, if they took the time to look back eight hundred feet, they would see a nice-looking building. But like all my neighbors' barns are a lot closer to the street than than that building's going to be. This is at the very back of my five-acre lot, so.
But but.
It's not going to be it's not going to be bright yellow then. Just kidding.
Pretty nice. I don't know if y'all have driven down Virginia, but our house is limestone, tongue and groove. You know, it's it's a it's a really nice-looking house. That that storage building's going to look nice, too, because I want it to look nice. It's going to be right next to my pool. So but it's really, my house is built like northeast and southwest. It's kind of a diagonal, you know, the slab is not square on the lot. So it's actually, that building is like when you drive up my driveway, that building kind of looks like it's a little bit behind my house. But yeah, it is. If you're looking at it from the street, it is in front of my house, but it's pretty far from the street. You know, it's a big lot. So I think a fence would look a whole lot worse than that building. It would be pretty random to throw a wood fence right down the middle of my lot to hide a nice-looking building. But, you know, I guess that's up to y'all.
Chris, did you have something in particular in mind with with some landscaping like like you would typically see in front of somebody's house? Would that would that satisfy? And I don't know if the rest of the council is looking for that or not, but I just wondered, did you have a specific screening that you were looking for?
I guess I was thinking natural screening. I was thinking more of the plantings. I wasn't, I didn't mean a fence. I'm sorry if I implied that. But would the would the applicant consider some planting?
Yeah, definitely.
Similar similar to what you know, your house is behind some looks like probably trees or crape myrtles or something. It's hard to tell because of the time of year. That is what I meant.
Those trees that are there, like on that drawing right there where it says lot twenty four, block four, kind of right in the middle of my lot, that that's actually just like overgrown, like whatever trees decided to grow right there. You know, the previous owner just like left that strip there. They just didn't mow it for probably twenty years. And so so these trees, those are like, those are like hackberry trees. So, you know, I guess theoretically I could extend that over about twenty feet so that it provides a but then I don't want to get a notice from the city that I need to mow my grass. So I don't know. I don't know how that works. I could definitely plant some trees there if if y'all want me to. Yeah, that's up to y'all.
Anybody else with thoughts?
This is Councilmember Morrow. I so onto the screening and the trees. Did you have a plan in place down the road for landscaping or zero escaping or anything like that in front of that area? Or had you thought about that?
Right now, that's right now, that's like a really nice grass area where, you know, the kids like to play and, you know, we play. That's kind of like a big soccer field basically right there. So we'd have to, we'd have to modify our soccer field a little bit if we put trees there. But if it comes between, you know, the problem is that's the only place to put. It's really not a pool house. What it really is, is I need a structure to run power to to put the pool to put the pool equipment next to. And so that, yeah, I'll use it as a storage building, but it's going to be it's somewhere that I can run the power to and put my pool equipment next to because I don't want my pool equipment just sitting out in the middle of the open. And as Wes and I think it was Tyler said, my house is on the back of my lot. So there's if I put it behind there, it's going to affect the drainage significantly. So this is really the only place I can put it. So if I can't, if I end up not being able to put it there, I basically am going to have to redig the hole where we're putting the pool. So, you know, and then I might just scrap the whole project altogether. But yeah, I would if I had to put trees there to get this passed, I would put them in. But, you know, as you can see, it's so far back from the street. When you drive down Virginia Lane, you can see fifty barns that are a lot closer to the street than that pool house, and they a lot of them are falling apart. And mine's going to look like a nice, you know, almost like a guest house. So I don't see any reason to hide it compared to what else is on Virginia Lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Anybody else with a thought? Anybody want to make a motion then?
This is Councilmember Morrow. I move to approve the variance request from section four point three point six of chapter fourteen with the condition that the storage building be constructed in location shown on the attached site plan and in compliance with the attached building elevations and exterior building materials.
Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Clark. I'll second.
Thank you. And any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Sorry, technical difficulties. I couldn't get my mic turned on. Aye.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. You've got your utility building, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. We are adjourned. I'll see you in the council meetings very shortly.
This conference will now be recorded.
I have seven oh one. We do have a quorum present. Mayor Pro Tem, do you mind leading us in a prayer, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Here we go. I can't get, now my camera's back. All right. So prayer. Yes, I can do that. So Father, thank you for the freedom we enjoy tonight as we come together to access the items before us. We ask that you grant us the wisdom to act in the best interest of all the citizens of Hazlet. We also ask for your continued protection of our city staff, our first responders, our teachers, and our residents as we attempt to cope with the COVID nineteen pandemic that risks the health of so many of us. We also ask for your blessings as we as we move forward from tonight's meeting. Amen.
Amen. Y'all please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A quick reminder for folks on the call, just some virtual meeting best practices. Three A, please be sure that your microphone is muted when you first join the meeting as well as when you're not speaking. This cuts down on background noise and feedback for everyone. Three B, participants should be sure they are recognized by the meeting chair to speak and state their name and address prior to speaking. Three C, during the video conference and teleconference meetings, the purpose of the chat function is to have a list for the chair to recognize speakers and for communicating technical difficulties or malfunctions. The chat is not for conversation during official meetings. And just as a backup to that, I have asked Diana to help me with anybody that signs up in the chat because I don't need, quite honestly, I don't need that distraction to be looking back and forth from what's going on in the meeting to the chat. So I'm going to ask the city secretary to help me there. Citizens' participation and comments, did we have any for this evening?
Mayor, I have someone for later during a public hearing.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Presentation five A, the twenty twenty racial profiling report presented by a representative of the Tarrant County Sheriff's Department. We got a notice on Friday that the sheriff's rep had a conflict. If you recall, we had this on our agenda from the meeting that we canceled two weeks ago with the ice storm. So what we'll have tonight is a written report only, and there was a request made by the rep that if anyone had any questions, to please get them back to him, and he would respond to them as soon as he could. Any questions or comments about that at this point? Okay, let's go on to six A, discuss, consider, and act to make appointment to the planning and zoning commission, place seven alternate two. Ms. Diana?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration, I have received application. I'm sorry, I'm running a little behind here from Mr. Matthew Hayes, who has applied to serve as an alternate on our planning and zoning commission that at this time is the only vacancy we have on that commission. And staff does recommend that you appoint Mr. Hayes for place seven alternate two on the planning and zoning commission through the end of the term, September thirty, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, ma'am. And any questions or comments about Mr. Hayes' application?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Hillborn. I move to appoint Matthew Hayes to serve as place seven alternate two on the planning and zoning commission through the end of the term, September thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, aye, second.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Yes, I.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I we're getting some feedback. Perhaps someone has their mic on.
Yeah, there's there's three or four people that that are on the call. If you could go star six on your phone or or mute your mute your microphone on your computer if you're on your computer. Thank you. I see one did it. A couple more coming up. Okay, if you're on your phone, star six. Otherwise, just mute your phone on your on your computer. Okay, let's try try to go forward. I let's try this anyway. Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams? I got you that time. Thank you. Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Welcome, Mr. Hayes. Number seven, items of community interest. There's several here. I'll run through. Seven A, the Hazlet Public Library has been awarded the twenty twenty Texas Achievement and Library Excellence Award by the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Have a copy of that letter displayed, and you have a copy of that in your packet. Congratulations to Barbara and the entire library staff. Very proud of that. Seven B, congratulations to Councilmember Hillborn for achieving the designation of certified municipal official, CMO, from the Texas Municipal League Institute by completion of fifty-four CEUs of training in a calendar year. You have that notification. Kind of embarrassed, just add the mayor to that. I also have that same same designation. Seven D, the candidates on the May first, twenty twenty one general election ballot are as follows and listed in the order on the ballot. Officer Mayor Gary Hulsey and Bob Golden incumbent, council member place two, Carrie D. Ricketts and Harold Williams incumbent, council member place four, Hector Nahara and Patricia Hillborn incumbent. And just a note that incumbent will not appear on the ballot. The word incumbent does not appear on the ballot. Seven E, the quarterly brush drop-off on February twentieth, twenty twenty one was canceled due to weather. Next date will be in the spring, and that date is to be determined. Any quick comments or questions about the items of community interest? Hearing none, let's go to the monthly reports. Anyone have any questions, comments about any of the monthly reports as submitted? Okay, hearing none, let's go to nine, staff reports to update on active items, projects, and event recaps. Nine A, emergency management report regarding the city emergency response during the weather emergency. Is this current? Chief Mays?
I'm here. Alrighty, so hopefully you all had a chance to read the report that was sent. So I'm just going to briefly summarize. The twenty twenty one winter weather event. All right, I want to start off by stating that there is a reason major events like this, like the winter storm is called a disaster. Generally, that means that Mother Nature has done something that is not instantaneously overcomeable. Below freezing temperatures for long periods of time was snow and ice, ice coming down across the entire state wreaking havoc to communities, including Hazlet. There were ninety-three hours of below freezing temperatures prior to the second wave that brought ice, snow, ice and snow on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. As the emergency manager, I began watching the weather and responding to fire calls. Stephen Harvey, the division chief, reported to the fire station at noon on Sunday to start coordinating volunteers to work throughout the week. We never went below four people on the fire truck, and our volunteers provided over around eight hundred and eighty hours of their time away from their families, and they're to be commended for that. The public works crews had had people stay in the night, monitoring road conditions and spreading sand every hour. I'm happy to report, we had no accidents during that time, so good job to them. On Monday, we got the generator at City Hall started. That would provide power to the building so that staff could access their servers remotely so that we could do our day-to-day works from our remote sites. Once we lost power to the majority of the city, or those who were on encore, the mayor and the administrator were in constant communications with the power company, trying to get updates, but they were unable to provide a timeline to them. By Wednesday, the mayor had executed a disaster declaration for the city. This could help us receive reimbursement from the state for our services and damages. No guarantees, but we are in line and following all of their processes to be able to receive those. The city of Fort Worth Water System was out of commission, causing everyone north of Loop Eight Twenty to lose water. Fort Worth supplies Hazlet with water, and by Wednesday afternoon, there was very little water left in the city. By Thursday, the city was back up to normal water pressure, but was in a boil water notice until we could get ours tested. Friday around one P. M., Public Works took the water sample to get tested, but that takes twenty-four hours to get the results. We did receive the results to lift the boil water notice around two P. M. on Saturday. Most of the power to the city was was restored by Friday, and things began to normalize. Diana did an outstanding job of trying to push out information to the public. However, without power and cellular service, that created another issue. Some of these, again, are over overcomeable, and some will strive to find alternate ways to communicate. It's it's just, or we will try to strive to find alter ways to communicate during power outages. So staff will be working together on an after-action report in order to find better ways to improve our services and communications during disaster. So I will just stop there, and I would just like to thank everyone for their support through this. It was a joint effort. It it took the whole team to get the job done, and, you know, there was no loss of life in the city, and I think that that's what it's all about. So I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Chief Mays?
Yes, so this is just questions. It's not criticism or anything. The on the generators, did they work right? And or were there some issues with that? And on fuel, how much fuel do we have? And I'm assuming we have some some way of refueling when we run low? Yeah, so the the first issue we had, Council Williams, was they were so cold, there's not any block heaters. So we had to go get those propane heaters and just hold them there to just try to get them warm enough to be able to start. So then we got them started, and I'm not for sure what the timeline is for whenever the generators get fueled. But I can assure you that this event has made it to be at the forefront of what we do, and the facility maintenance person that is hired is going to be responsible for making sure that those operate, they get serviced, and and remain fueled and ready to go at all times. So.
Harold, this is the mayor. I'd like to throw my two cents worth in there. I pushed really, really hard, and the chief had to pull me back on this. I wanted us, because we had done this in the past, I wanted I wanted us, because we had done this in the past, I wanted to open up the community center so we would have a warming facility. The chief had tried to order some diesel to top off the tank for the generator and was unable to get a commitment from any of the contacts that he had for fuel for the generator. So we made a joint decision to not open a warming center because we didn't want to advertise it and then run out of diesel, you know, while people were in there trying to stay warm. So hindsight, you know, I feel comfortable that we made the right decision, but I'm sure people could question whether or not we should have opened it for as long as we had fuel. We just didn't want to promise something, not meant to be an excuse, but that's the thought process behind that decision. Anyone else? Harold, did that answer your questions? Is there anybody else that has a question or comment for the chief?
Yes, that answered mine, and, I mean, I got no complaints. I was just curious.
This is Councilmember Morrow. Same thing. It was, I thought you handled it great, and thanks for the water and the communication. One thing that I'd read online was that other cities have a community emergency response team where civilians go through training to support during emergency situations. Is that something that you've heard of or thought of? I wasn't really sure what all it meant, but I took it, so I would be sure and ask it tonight.
Yeah, if we get into a real crisis, I mean, it takes a lot of coordination and to get people in the community to serve on that. And so what we have relied upon is, City of Saginaw has about a 50-member team that does receive the necessary training to be able to do certain search, and I don't want to say rescues, but search patterns. They come help during our haunted hayride event. So it's a really good organization that if we needed that, that's my first call. We do have our Hasslet Fire Support Group that has three members, you know, that are more on the rehab side, but they could help in certain fire functions as well.
Thank you. That's- yes, Saginaw was a city that I had read about, so thank you very much.
Anyone else with a question or comment?
I just wanted to add that I appreciate what everybody did, both people onsite and the people that were working from home. I felt like we really stepped up as well as we could, and that we really excelled at it, so. So congratulations, Kurt, for that.
Thank you.
We have the most dedicated employees in the area. Chief had outstanding leadership and pulled everyone together, and everyone knew what they were supposed to be doing. And I really appreciate all the employees. I heard nothing but compliments from residents throughout the event, and I'd just like to say y'all did an outstanding job.
And Chief, do you want to touch just briefly on the fact that, or I'll just try to summarize it real quick. Throughout- throughout the evolution until, I think until the water was cleared on Saturday, Chief Mays asked that we have a Public Works person available 24/7 for anything that came up that maybe the fire department couldn't handle. And I just wanted to applaud him for reaching out and asking that cooperation from staff. And I think there were a couple instances where Public Works got some rave comments. Toward the end of the week, somebody wanted to have their water turned off, and they barely had the request in, and they had two people on their front door, you know, acknowledging the fact that they had to shut off the water. So I couldn't speak any more highly of the team effort that Chief Mays was able to coordinate throughout that whole week. He did an awesome job, and I certainly don't mean to shortchange any of the folks that were there. He would be there at first, and already has acknowledged that he had a lot of help, and we owe all those folks a lot of gratitude, because I'd hate to say we dodged a bullet because some of us got hit pretty hard, and a couple of our folks had some pretty extensive damage from pipes breaking. But as a city, I think we weathered that storm as well as could have been expected, although I do anticipate some recommendations being made in the very near future when we do that, lessons learned, to maybe change a couple of practices or policies or whatever down the road. Okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah. If nothing else, Kurt, don't go anywhere. Nine B, update on coronavirus COVID-19 issues.
Alrighty, so we're still in phase two of opening Hasslet. Again, kind of wait until around June 1 to see what changes are between now and then, but I think we're headed in a positive direction. So again, City Hall, court window, libraries open to the public from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. In-person meetings are still discouraged, but can occur by appointment. We are not opening the community center up to programs, exercise classes, or for the senior adults at this point. Public Works, the facility maintenance employee has taken over disinfectant spraying at the City Hall and the library to ensure that that is done every day and let the regular staffers do their primary jobs. So that's appreciated, and as well as he's maintaining the park restrooms. On the fire department side, so early February, I went and received my second shot, and I was approached by the Hurst Fire Chief who manages the Hurst vaccination site. And he asked me if we had anybody that could help, that they were in desperate need of trying to fulfill, you know, their ability to administer the COVID shot, or the vaccine, not the COVID shot. So since then, Dennis Elzer is one of our full-time employees. He has been going over there, working two shifts a week given the vaccine. And what I think is so important about that, besides we need to administer it, but it also shows support from the City of Hasslet during this pandemic event, so it's something I'm proud of. All right, recapping just the last two months in comparison. So in January, we had 56 new positives. And in February, we only had 25. We had 72 that recovered in the city in January, 42 in February. The one the mayor's not happy about is we had zero deaths in, up until January, but unfortunately, we did have one death in the city in February. Our county numbers, we had 118, and this last month, we only had 42. So again, the numbers have drastically come down. We'll see what happens after this freeze-out. The numbers are gonna drop, but will they come back up? We'll see. Due to the numbers being down, the capacity increased to the restaurants 75%, and bars can be open. Citizens wanting the vaccine should contact Tarrant County Public Health or pre-register at tarrantcounty.com/covidshot to see if they qualify for the vaccination. FEMA has opened up two new vaccination sites, one in Dallas Fair Park and one at Globe Life Field in conjunction with Arlington Fire Department. They hope to give out 21,000 shots a week. They are primarily targeting people over 75 and the underserved communities. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has received its emergency authorization use in the city, but it's unknown when and where and how this single-dose vaccine will be administered. The mask order and disaster declaration run until May 28. Rumor has it that the governor will soon be rolling out a new plan regarding the mask and Open Texas order. And I'll end with Rob. Do you have a report on open meetings?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nothing new to report as of today. We'll call, Governor's last extension of the disaster declaration was done on February 4, carrying us basically for 30 days, so I anticipate that the governor will act again next day or so, the next couple of, two or three days. And I will send you all an email with that information as far as when he acts, what he's done. I would expect that the disaster declaration will continue. I heard the same thing that the fire chief just said about that there may be some changes coming with regard to mask rules and, you know, those kind of things, but I'll keep you posted as I know something. Try to answer any questions you might have, but that's all I know at this point.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions or comments for Chief Mays or the city attorney?
Now, this is Mayor Pro Tem. Chief, I'm so glad that, to know that you sent somebody over to help out the county give those injections. I know when I was there at Hurst for my first injection, I got it from Keller Fire Department personnel. They did a great job, and as well as any nurse I've ever, ever gotten an injection from. It's good to know that Hasslet was also chipped in to help. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Anyone else? Let's go on to nine C, introduction of the newest Hasslet Fire Department volunteers. Chief?
Alrighty, I think Diana was, we'd send a little flyer over normally, for those of you who are not used to it. Normally, we'll, we bring the new volunteers to City Hall. That didn't work. So then we were gonna zoom them the other night during training, but that didn't work. So we're just gonna send a photo. So each year, we test for new volunteer firefighters in January. So on January 16th, we did our test. We had received 24 applications. 23 showed up on the test day. This year, what we had to do was create a, two different test times, because we were trying to space everybody out for COVID. So we were able to roughly do 12 at a time in the training room, one at 9:00 and one at noon. So anyway, 23 took the written test, 21 passed the written test. They then went to the physical agility test, where 19 passed the physical agility test. Of the 19, we chose to interview 14 over two nights. From the 14, we chose to take 10. We lost, so they have to go do a, an orientation, which includes doing physical training. They run up and down the hill over by Councilman Williams' house and do different physical activities, and sometimes it weeds people out, and we lost one after day one. So we now are down to nine. So one of our recruits comes to us with over 15 years of service, years in the fire service. He's currently a firefighter paramedic with Halton City. He had been with Blue Mountain Volunteer Fire Department for 15 years. So he just has to complete our three-month probationary period, and then he'll go, just join the regular guys. It's been very busy. We've been to over 10 structured fires in the last two weeks, and he's already made two of them, and his experience has been a great help. So we choose a class captain. And so this year, Ms. Alyssa Carey was appointed the class captain after she displayed her leadership and physical abilities on orientation day. She just did a great job, and she'd run ahead. They had to run up to the hill from the fire station. She took off running and then looked back, and everybody was behind her, so she would join them, go back, and she just, she just did an outstanding job of communicating with the people. So we're excited to see how she works as the class captain. We have two legacy recruits this year. So what that means is Mike Thedford, his son Grant has joined the department. He'll be considered a junior firefighter. And also Lee Godbolt's son Reed, who just finished EMT and Basic Fire Certification at TCC, has joined. And y'all, this is what makes this job fun. We get to watch these little kids grow up, running around the fire station to now they're riding on the fire truck. We also have one junior firefighter that lives in Northland. So the addition has paid off having somebody live, live close to the city that can help us respond. So with that, we currently have 39 volunteers, five paid members. The sixth paid firefighter will be starting around April 1st, and that is the end of report.
Questions or comments for the chief?
Congratulations, everyone.
Yeah, looks like a great class, Kurt.
Yeah, we're pretty excited for this one. They've been, of course, it's been super busy. We've ran more calls in two weeks than we typically do in a month, and so they're thinking this is like the normal. We're like, no, 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 this is not normal, so we'll see.
Did you support the fire in Richland Hills?
You know, we did. We, so we didn't go on the day of the active fire. I happened to go over there, but on the next day, because that big old building burned for two days, and their crews are exhausted, so they, the chief reached out to me and said, man, is there any way you could bring your ladder truck over here and give us a break? And we're like, absolutely, so we called around, got some volunteers to come up to the station, and we were able to go over there for, I don't know, four or five hours and finish putting it out. So we did, we did help.
That's great. Good for Hasslet.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Welcome aboard all those guys, Kurt. I know you'll take good care of them.
Yes, sir.
Nine D, Alliance, Texas Hasslet Accessibility Improvement Project, monthly report. That?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight's report comes on the heels of last week, the signs going up on Harmon Road, so that was the official start. You can see my air quotes. I'm trying to air quote here. We made it by two days. We had the grant for 26 months and finished with two days left. So all those mini panic attacks I had, I feel a little more justified in that process. I'm gonna start with the project finance update, and Diane, if you would, please go to that first attachment, the build grant application. That's the one. Thank you. There were two primary goals with this project. One of those was how do we fund it in a way that we don't increase taxes on existing businesses or residents or increase the cost to the residents? And this was our funding table that ended up being really how the project came to be funded. And it was important to look at this as we go into the construction phase. Again, most of this is the type A or type B fund when we talk about the local funds, although there was 337,000 spent from the general fund at the time of application. I believe there was a little more, about that much probably, prior to us filing for the grant for the engineering that had been done on the two road segments, but we were able to save that and apply it to this. Again, as y'all know, type A and type B funds are basically dedicated or restricted funds. So, you know, again, the purpose here was to use those funds that are dedicated to be used for infrastructure investment or business development and not ride on the general fund. So even when we issued the bonds, if you look on the fourth line down, that three and a quarter million, those are sales tax-supported only through the EDC, so there's not going to be, but God forbid, there is a default. It does not impact the city's general fund in any way. So that can never go over to cost the city on that side of the equation. And again, that was done with purpose. But it took a lot of entities, you know, we know we're moving a lot of Fort Worth traffic, but it took a lot of players to pull this off so that Hasslet wasn't having to, you know, really foot the bill to move all that traffic through the region. So we had 2 million that had came, that came in from Tarrant County. We have the $6.9 million TERS. And again, we do have participation from Tarrant County and the college. So instead of the loan, if you will, from North Central Texas Council of Governments running about 9.6 million for Hasslet to pay back over 20 years, with those other two entities participating, we believe Hasslet's contribution will be about 3.9 million. I'll go over the TERS in a second, though. So again, it will pay off that TERS much quicker, and Hasslet's contribution will be much less than originally anticipated. And then we've projected $5 million in dedicated right-of-way. So far, the project has 6.3 million in appraised value of dedicated right-of-way in Phase 1. So again, spreading this out to landowners, to developers, to Tarrant County, and then, of course, the $20 million build grant that COG helped us receive, and we got a lot of support from a lot of players, that was a huge part that put this over the goal line. And so you've got the percentages on the side. Those are estimates. But again, the goal in the funding side of the equation was how do we make this work and not have Hasslet residents have to tote the bill? So this was that. If you'll, Diane, if you'd go to the next page in there- If you'll, Diana, if you'd go to the next page in there, please, the TERS boundary. And I mentioned the TERS, the way the TERS works, everything that was taxable when the boundary was created is still taxable. All of that revenue still comes into the general fund. Well, the increment is that new development, the 900,000 square foot of construction for CTR on Westport, the 1.4 million of the Intermodal Commerce Park. There is another 500,000 square feet plan for the north part of Caraway. So as those values hit the tax roll, that's the increment. And 50% of that will still go into your general fund and increase your revenues. And then 50% of that for both, for all three, the city, the county and the college will go in to reduce that debt to Cog. So again, the purpose there is without the road, this increment doesn't happen. But with it, it does, and you see the increase in the valuation. So once this pays off, we think it's going to pay off in probably seven years short of our original estimate. And I don't remember what that was now. I apologize. I had it somewhere and now I've lost it. But it was originally a 20-year TERS. We think it'll pay off seven years early because of all the contributions and because the development that is already occurring within that zone.
Thad, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that's 13 years. Twenty minus seven.
Yes, sir. But we start, we actually implemented this two years ago. So we're already two years in. We're generating before we even have to start paying back money. So again, it's going to really accelerate that repayment. Before I move on from the financing, is there any questions on that? I know that one's been tricky. We still have the, the construction AFA to, to work out, but we have agreements that dictate if there are project overruns, Cog picks those up, those types of things. But on that section, are there any questions? Because again, that one's been real tricky.
I, I have a, a request. The image on our screen is, is basically a grayscale. And I wonder if Diana, who I guess I think is still controlling the screen, could she run her pointer along the route of Hasslet Parkway so that in case someone can't see that route? Yeah, thank you.
Were there any other questions on that piece? All right, I'm one. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I'd just like to make a comment for the, for the callers on the line. So for those that are, I've seen saying that, you know, Hasslet doesn't have the infrastructure. So here is a case where this project is $59 million, mostly of other people's money that, that our staff has put together to improve regional traffic flow through the region. I, I for one think it's, it's just the right thing to do and highly commendable. So I'm, I'm proud to have supported this and will continue to do so.
Well, again, through Mr. Quinn, you know, we knew that there were two overriding things. Is one, how do we make this reasonable for the city of Hasslet? It is a regional transportation project. Hasslet will see growth, but we aren't, we know we're moving a lot of other people through the region. So that was truly one of the overriding factors. The other one, if you skip forward to the construction update, Diana, would you take it to the next one? Okay. As I mentioned, construction officially started last Thursday. It got right down to the wire because Zachary had to have billable hours in February to bill in March for an April payment, or we would not have hit that last deadline for build to obligate those funds. Luckily, we'll have a lot of internal benchmarks, but the next big build benchmark is substantial completion and we've got four years to get there and we hope to be done before that. So we shouldn't have any issues. If you see the green section, the project was broken down technically into two phases. It's really, it's not phases where the construction company only builds one, then leaves and then comes back. It was to allow us to go through the open field area. Again, the green was all dedicated right of way and easements. In addition to about 2.8 million worth of assessments that they agreed to when they go to build the projects. The red area is a lot of smaller lots. That's where all our franchise utilities are. We have the intersection of Schoolhouse and 156. So again, we've got a deadline to get that right of way purchased or dedicated, or however we had to get, are able to get that. So that when Zachary finishes that green area, that they can move straight into phase two. So again, after today, y'all's next meeting, Travis gets to do that one. I asked him to leave me out of the meetings if he could, but we'll see. We've already, again, we had our pre-construction meetings and got a lot of that cleared up. I think he's already got another one scheduled for Friday with utility, but I'll let him do that one. Again, I mentioned that we still have to do the construction AFA. We have to get that one replaced. But we don't expect any surprises there. Tech dot just had to get the project started and they have not worried about the AFA. Let's see, right of way, we know phase one is done. Phase two originally started with 18 parcels. When we reached 100% plans, we were able to remove parcel nine DE. The DE stands for drainage easement. So that left us with 17 parcels. Five of those were the reappraised, resurated around the 156 intersection. We had to restart that process and that is ongoing. Nine of the parcels, we have active discussions going on, meetings. We're advancing those fairly quickly right now. And then three, we have re-engaged those properties as we got to phase two. Two of those, we deleted the drainage easement. So that changes the discussions there. We're not impacting those properties as much. And then we just have one that's the same owner, same need, and we're just going through the process of negotiations back and forth. So we are on track. I think we will hit that, Jim, did you say July? The June?
Yes, July. Really?
Why don't you explain, explain the significance of Intermodal connecting to Hasslet Parkway as a route to 35 and 170 and the trucks coming out of Intermodal Center?
Absolutely. And, you know, I've actually talked to Ricardo Gonzalez about this. I know it's difficult to enforce right away, but that it will be the truck route, Intermodal Parkway and that extension from Intermodal to Hasslet Parkway and out to 170 is built to a heavier standard than the remainder. That is to take the traffic that comes out of the BNSF yard and the Alliance Airport area and take it directly out to 170 and I-35. And a lot of the freight here goes east towards DFW Airport in that area for final distribution. So that is a very important connection. And again, this will be the easiest route out of Hasslet once that's constructed. So and that's also part of that regional piece of it, is not just moving the Fort Worth traffic through and picking up the, the hopefully commerce from that. It's also moving that freight out down that road that's dedicated for this. Travis, I'm going to put you on the spot. You said that, because I, we've been working with Fort Worth on where they're going with Avondale Hasslet. But I'd asked a question on where they were on the Intermodal piece and you've got some information on that, did you not?
I do. They are underdesigned, almost complete. Their Peloton is the engineering company on that and they have completed design. I think they're about to move into right of way and utility relocation. So between, between Intermodal and their portion of Avondale Hasslet, I think the, the entire area will be fully built out soon.
Yeah, I think, I think when we get to phase two, our projects on Avondale Hasslet piece out towards 287 may complete around the same time according to our last conference call with Fort Worth. But it's important when we talk about Intermodal that, you know, the Hasslet piece is going to be extremely nice all the way up to the city limits. And then it pinches down to a pretty ugly section from Hasslet City Limits to the BNSF Yard. And we are, again, we're in constant communication with Fort Worth to make sure those final connections are made so that this project can be all that we've designed it to be. So again, that's, all the gas lines got moved out of the way. They were shocked again that we've made the deadlines. XTO finally came through and got that one out of the way. So again, phase one is cleared and ready to go. Right now, waiting on direction for groundbreaking event. You know, the Chiefs talked about numbers. We had originally said June 1, but we're not sure what we're going to do with that yet. But we will be getting press releases out very soon. Because again, now that construction has began, begun, and I've told you all this, so, you know, for two years now, developers will get serious. They'll start looking very closely at this area. Once the dirt starts turning, it's no longer a concept. It's no longer lines on a map. It is a real project that provides connectivity. It provides some four-way intersections where commerce tends to go. So again, we're going to be putting those press releases out and getting the attention that we want. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah, I've got a question. Is, is there any way to ensure that these trucks are going to use these outlets to get to 35 and they're going to be in the city ordinance and keep them from coming down 156?
Could the speaker identify himself, please?
Yeah, sorry. Hector and I head out live at 402 Summer Drive in the Meadow.
Go ahead, go ahead, Thad.
I think that was outside my scope. As 156 is a state highway. I, I simply, I'd have to defer to Rob for research. I do not know an answer on keeping trucks off of 156. Again, we can truck route to keep them off the west end of Hasslet Parkway and other city streets. But again, I don't know our authority on, I just don't know the answer to that one, sir.
What I can, this is Rob. What I can add to that is FM 156 is a designated truck route in the city along with Westport Parkway and Intermodal Parkway currently. I think those are the only three truck routes designated in the city. So, so trucks are permitted to use FM 156 and, and will be continued.
Okay, so, so the answer is no. Could, could there be a city restriction on, on these trucks or a speed limit of some sort? Yes, 156.
On FM 156, that is a, a tech dot right of way that the city does not control. So in fact, the speed limits, the city sets the speed limits, but only after a speed study is done by the state tech dot. After an engineering study and then, so the city does not have a control really over, over that, although we established this to limit. We don't have to rely on their studies to do so. And, and so I, I think the answer to that is that that's a state road and the state, state really controls FM 156 in pretty much all aspects.
But they, but they control. I'm sorry.
156, the state.
I'm still not clear. The city, the city has authority to set the speed limit on 156. I know Tech dot does the study. So can we request one and then propose a speed limit?
This is the mayor. Let me, let me throw my two cents worth in. Tech dot has tried to be a very good partner with the city of Hasslet on that speed limit when this, when 156 was last resurfaced. And I want to say that was, it runs together for me, I want to say three to four years ago. Shortly after that, there was a proposal because of that improvement to raise the speed limit north of Blue Mound Road on 156. The city responded very strongly that we did not want that speed limit raised. And much like Hasslet Parkway Intermodal, where we're hoping for a 40 to 45 mile an hour speed limit range that, that we did, our input to that and, and they listened to us and they did not increase the speed. You know, south of Blue Mound, I believe it's 55 miles an hour. North of Blue Mound, it's 45. And that's what we fought to keep. I, I think the relationship that the city has with Tech dot helps us in those kinds of discussions and/or negotiations. And at least we got a draw out of the last one. They let it stay like it was. I think over and over that the point's been made here, sir, that, that it's a Tech dot highway. They have the ability to set the speed limit. We can certainly try to influence that with our own, with our own input.
Okay, understood. Just one more question. On phase two of this project, you know, concerning the railroad track, because that's a big issue. You know, you see this on all the social media posts. The train delay and, you know, up to 30 minutes. Is, is there any kind of plan to alleviate that or build a bridge over this thing? Or what's the plan for that?
That, this is the mayor. Let, let me take that for a second. When, when this, when this project was first being discussed and then through several iterations since, there was a question as to whether or not we would try to do a tunnel or a bridge across the railroads just west of 156 on Avondale Hasslet. Quite honestly, had we not been able to get the build grant for the 20 million that Thad talked about earlier, this project probably wouldn't have happened because we had, we had racked our brains trying to figure out how to come up with ways to finance it. And until we got the 20 million from the feds, it just didn't look like it was going to happen. So the discussion about that intersection was, do we want to, do we want to try to do a tunnel or a bridge or not? That was going to, in, in round figures, don't hold me to the exact number, but in round figures, that was going to add another 20 million to that project. When we, when we look at 377 in Keller and Watauga and some other locations and some of the four-lane roads that are hitting that east-west, there, there are some backups. There's no question about that. And the rail yard to the north of Hasslet causes the vast majority of the problem with blocking traffic there. Number one, we didn't do it because of the, the expense and, and we were trying to get this project through. There was a very tight time limit on getting the build grant application in. So unfortunately, we made the decision not to pursue other than an at-grade crossing there from, from a standpoint of cost and, and timeliness. Yeah, it, it's going to, it's going to be a problem. However, comma, now we're going to have four lanes trying to go across it instead of two. So we're hoping that there'll be some improvement and we're constantly talking to BNSF about building, building trains as they're coming south out of there and not blocking that intersection. We're, we're all very well aware that that's a, that's a stumbling block. But we're, we're hoping that there'll be an incremental improvement with the four lanes and, and that's, that's kind of the, the compromise we worked out at, at this point.
Mayor, would you also mention the, would you also mention the, the John Day Road extension? As far as having a second entrance, a second way across and into that subdivision?
So the, the spine road in the LaTerra Development on the east side is going to be the high school and the middle school. On the west side is, is the majority of the homes and the elementary school. The, the south, one-third of that has been almost completed, should be done within a couple of weeks. Travis, if you have a completion date, throw it in. Now, it goes from four lanes down to two, but we will have connected Avondale Hasslet and Blue Mound Road. So parents, school buses, emergency access has two different ways to get in there. We can get in off of Blue Mound. We can get in there off of Avondale Hasslet. It's not the ideal answer, but it's an incremental improvement. And, and that's, that's what we're living with right now is incremental improvements instead of a wholesale change. Not, not, not the ideal, but it should be an improvement. I hope that helps a little bit.
Mayor, if I may, apologize.
Go ahead, I'm not sure.
Mayor, I, I mentioned the two goals. The, the second goal I kind of dropped off was what do, how do we build a project that would be accepted in the community? And that's why we ended up with a four-lane park, four-lane parkway much closer to a north Tarrant Parkway as opposed to a 500-foot right of way coming through. Maybe there would have been a bridge, but again, you would have a 500-foot swath, limited access that was 170. So that was the other goal was how do we build something that does not impact the community that way? And that's something of a trade-off. And you were accurate. It was 20 to 25 million on the bridge. The negative impacts on 156 businesses was also considered because that bridge would come down past Schoolhouse Road because of the elevation. And again, it's, you are also correct that four lanes of traffic will queue wider and clear faster when that track is not blocked. So that was all part of the input that we provided through the grant application process. And we talked about how, who's going to pay for it. 20 to 25 million Hasslet really gains very little Hasslet the community over that, that bridge. So it's really hard for the, the local funds to go towards that. So I think that was a, a good representation. But again, the, the second goal on the funding reasonable for Hasslet was what kind of project would work for Hasslet? Again, a 500-foot right of way of 170 coming through and cutting the city in half was not really wanted by anybody, including people at Eagle Mountain. Again, 500 foot right of way of 170 coming through and cutting the city in half was not really wanted by anybody, including people at Eagle Mountain Lake. Who have called me about this project. They thought it was going to be an extension of 170. And when I send them the map, they're like, oh, we like that. So again, that was another piece of that, those two goals was fund it without raising taxes or having fees on existing people in Haslett. And build a project that really fit with the community. And again, we, we feel we've done that. We hope we've done that.
So Thad, who's going to pay for the maintenance on this thing?
Ultimately, Travis is going to pay for that. Councilman Williams, this will be a city street post-construction. Travis can talk more intelligently than I can, certainly about the design life of a, a very thick concrete street. Again, this is typically 50-year life, but this will be a city street post-construction. So there will be more control over the design speed is maximum 45. But again, that's designed speed and this will be a city street that can be controlled by the city of Haslett. But ultimately, we will continue to make sure that as we build along this road, that money's put aside or planned for its ultimate repair. But it will be city street. Travis?
Yes, that, that's, that's actually better for Haslett to, for it to be a city street, city controlled right of way. There's city water and sewer in the street. That's what actually Thad said was another meeting on Friday. Yes, that we're talking about utilities coming through there. So concrete street, nine inches thick, 12 inches thick in sections. So ultimately, yes, it has a responsibility, but it's also Haslett's right of way.
That's going to be a huge expense to us 10 or 15 down, 10 or 15 years down the road when stuff starts tearing apart.
I, I think.
The, the difference between a regular city street being constructed and a text dot city street is that they do build them for 50-year design lives.
Jim, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, Mayor, we're playing on doing a lot of zero escaping, a lot of low maintenance plants drought resistant along the parkway to reduce any kind of mowing maintenance.
Last item I might mention, Ms. Quinn, is we have already sent over our right of way and designs for that berm that is planned between Haslett Park and Haslett Parkway. And Mr. Pedego is currently looking at how we might be able to use his purchase of Brumball and increase that both landscaping height and improve drainage in that area. So we're actively working on that project to make sure that we've done everything we can. Our design had to fit within our right of way that was cleared. But with a partnership of Mr. Pedego, we might be able to do something a little bit, a little bit better than what we have in the plans.
Is, is that the end of your report, Thad?
Yes, sir.
A question for you. A lot of our folks, a lot of our citizens have not seen that, that virtual aerial that we had. Is that possible to get a copy of that and maybe put that on or a link so, so that our citizens could get a feel for what that's going to look like?
I'll send that over to Diana either tonight is when we're off here. If it's really late, I'll send it first thing in the morning and we can get that out there.
So it, it, it gives you an artificial look as if a drone were flying over the, the perspective roadway. And it gives you a much better feel of what it's going to look like. And that, that's why I pushed for that. So.
And that was developed with, yes, Mayor, that was developed with the engineering drawings. So it's not pure concept. It's actually from elevations. You'll see one of the developments that we already had a schematic for on that aerial. So again, so people understand it's not pure concept. It is actually developed from the engineering documents.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have anything for Thad? Thank you very much for that recap. Let's go on to number 10, discussion items 10A. Receive an update regarding code enforcement activities and procedures. Jim, is this Wes?
Yes, this is Wes Morrison. He'll give you a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I provided you just some real high-level information on code enforcement. Most of that, I'm sure you already knew. It was nothing new to you. I guess I just want to say that I know this was a request of council, so y'all may have some questions for me. But really and truly, as I get, get more involved and get more accustomed to, to how we're doing things in Haslett. We're just looking at ways right now with code enforcement to streamline and add more structure to our process. I know there's some concern and I think it came up during the last budget about freeing up some staff time. And we're finding ways to do that a little bit more efficiently. And so I would just say that hopefully in the next few months, you'll see a little bit more code enforcement activity. Of course, that means usually if we're out there doing more code enforcement, we're usually upsetting somebody. So you may get a few more calls because of that. But, but that's what I've been told we need to do. So that's what we're moving forward. If there are any specific questions, I'll, I'll be glad to answer those.
Anyone with questions or comments with Wes about code enforcement? Hearing none, let's go to 10B, discuss Crown Castle request to add additional square footage to ground lease site.
Yes, Rob's been working with a Mr. Jones in Florida regarding your request for additional land. He looks fine to you.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Jim. What I'd, what I'd like to do is cover this briefly here in open session. I would ask later on if we can spend a couple of minutes in executive session to cover the financial aspect of this. But council will recall that we have a cell tower ground lease at the location off of Schoolhouse Road by the ball field. That's what this is in reference to. The original ground lease was commenced back in 2006. Was for five years with five-year renewal periods. And that, that carried through all the way through 2017. Mayor recall in 2017, city was approached about revising or amending that lease agreement with Crown Castle. They came and specifically asked for a longer term to let the lease continue for an extended period. In exchange for that, they paid the city a signing bonus and also agreed to a revenue share. So that if any new tenants were added to the cell tower, that the city would receive an additional sum for each tenant that got added on top of the base rental rate. So the council agreed to that revision in 2017 through a first amendment to that lease agreement. That was in 2017. January of 2021, city administrator was approached by Crown Castle. They basically came forward with request to consider a second amendment to this lease for, for two things, for two reasons. First, AT&amp;T has asked for additional ground space. This is a ground lease agreement where they currently have 450 square feet. I think it's a 30 by 15-foot ground lease. And AT&amp;T wants to add generator to ensure communications are available in times of emergency. I think we're all pretty aware of, of Snowmageddon we just went through and how that could be important. And so, one, AT&amp;T has asked for additional ground space to be able to add that, that generator equipment. And also Crown Castle has advised that if they are to have the ability to add additional tenants to the tower, that additional ground space is needed. So I read into that, that they're basically telling us that currently they probably aren't going to have much luck adding anybody to the tower. And, but if we allow them additional ground lease space, that, that, that could change. So Travis, city engineer, visited the site, took pictures, I think that are attached in your packet to see if there was adequate space. What they've asked for, as I said, the, the original lease space is 450 square feet. They've asked for an additional 450 square feet to be added next to the, adjacent to the existing 450 square feet. So what, what, what I would ask of you all is to consider authorizing city staff to conduct negotiations with Crown Castle. To consider, to consider adding this additional ground lease space to lease if that is, if that is something we want to be looked at. What we would do is prepare a second lease amendment. What, what that, that should result in more revenue to the city if we're leasing them as additional space. That should result in some more revenue. That's something I'd like to talk to you about in executive session. And it could, and I just say the word could, could result in additional revenue sharing if any additional broadband users are added, added to the tower. I don't think there's any guarantee of that, but what Crown Castle has said is, is currently it doesn't look like any additional would be added unless we provide them with some more ground lease space. Again, no formal action is needed by y'all other than to give us direction on whether we should continue with negotiations or second lease amendment along those lines. And I'll try to answer any questions you have. And I don't know if there's a representative of Crown Castle on the line or not, because you know, there's a lot of callers on here and I, I don't know who anybody is. So Mayor, Mayor, you might ask if anybody's out there from Crown Castle.
I'll do that. Anybody from Crown Castle that has anything to offer? Any, anyone from council or otherwise who, who has a question or comment? We do have, we do have something Diana covered us on that in executive session later on in the agenda. So rather than, than leave now and go to exec, I would, I would recommend we just go ahead with the rest of the agenda, not to shut down discussion at this point. If anybody has a comment, I, I would like to pursue, pursue amending the document myself, but that's up to council. But we, we can go to exec later to discuss specific negotiating terms to be discussed in that amendment. And any, anyone have any questions or comments of a general nature that we can, we can try to hit right now?
Mayor Pro Tim, I think what you just said is a good way to proceed.
Okay. If I don't hear a negative from anybody else, we'll, we'll close on this item and go to the consent agenda. We have several items here. 11A approved the February 1st, 2021 regular city council meeting minutes. 11B acceptance of a permanent 10-foot wide public utility easement being 0.043 acres. More or less out of the Eldridge Hopkins survey abstract number 646, the Georgiana M. Lewis survey abstract number 966. And part of lot two, block A of the vines edition Haslett, Tarrant County, Texas. 11C acceptance of two easements for placement of a supply line to a new water tower. Number one, permanent 10-foot wide water easement being 0.014 acre tract of land out of the MEP and PRR company survey number 12. Abstract number 1132 Haslett, Tarrant County, Texas. And number two, permanent 12-foot wide water easement being 0.014 acre tract of land out of the Coleman Voyage survey abstract number 225 Haslett, Tarrant County, Texas. Any questions or comments about any of the three items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda then.
This is Mayor Pro Tim. I still move.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim. And Harold, you second?
This is Hillborne. I can second. Did Harold get there first?
I think Harold got you there. Okay, Harold, I'll, I'll take you on the second. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote then. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes 5-0. 12, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and action items. 12A continued from 2-1 to 2021. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act to approve ordinance 002, 2021. To amend chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances entitled zoning ordinance specifically related to section 4.2.5H entitled additional use standards. And a note that the public hearing was held and closed at the 2-1, 2021 regular council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a little bit of background on this one, if you'll recall, like, like you stated, in February. You heard, you had a public hearing regarding this amendment that was recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission. The amendment was essentially stated that any gas well pumps would be prohibited from being located on any property adjacent to residential uses. During the public hearing on February 1st, there was a comment that suggested we look at keeping that language, but adding to it a distance requirement. In short, saying that you can't be adjacent to residential uses and you have to be so far away from a residential use. It was continued at that point to allow staff to do some research and see what would be an appropriate distance. Staff looked at some other cities in our region to kind of see what they and how, what they do and how they regulate these. What we came up with is that we could not find a city that, I'm not saying it's not out there, we just didn't find a city that regulates, that prohibits both being adjacent to a residential use and a distance requirement and poses a distance requirement. So what we did, and I talked to Thad a little bit about this, you know, we don't want to, we want to maintain a, a business-friendly environment, but also want to protect our neighborhoods. So what we came up with was a, a hundred-foot separation. If, if the council wanted to include a separation, that's, that's distance, then we'd say 100 feet. How, how I came up with that, and that was, that was something that I just kind of looked at after talking to Thad and getting some questions answered. Specifically, I was looking at the Haslett Parkway. Haslett Parkway right of way, that's our major arterial through our city, is 120 feet in width. So for instance, if you had by chance of a grocery store that had gasoline pumps with, as an accessory use going on Haslett Parkway. You would want to make sure that that may be an area that you'd want that use and you wouldn't want to regulate it out of that area. So that's how I came up with 100 feet. So really what you have before you tonight is, is the, is the distance. You can decide if you want to do a distance, you can take Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Anyone with questions?
Mayor, this is Gary Halsey, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, the, so this would apply to the entire city and not just the Haslett Parkway interchange. Maybe you could word this that, you know, this 100 feet applies to the Haslett Parkway interchange. And, but potentially, you could have this, anyone, you know, we could have a gas station within 100 feet of a residence. That resident would have a fit. I'm quite sure of it. Now, I'm the one that the previous meeting made the suggestion of putting a distance on there. And I suggested 600 or 1,000 feet to protect the residents from a gas station going in right next door to them. Adjacent or not, there's that separation. I would just ask that the council consider that this, this is, this would apply to the entire city. If you want to give some leniency to the Haslett Parkway, then it could, it could so be cited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council, any questions or comments?
This is Councilmember Hillborne. I think there are, are other commercial, potential commercial sites in our city that could, could be affected here in addition to Haslett Parkway. So I guess I would prefer that the council consider accepting the original ordinance as was, was approved by the PNC. But I'm certainly willing to go along with whatever the rest of the council wants to do.
This is Councilmember Morrow. So I just want to clarify, the original says gasoline sales pumps would be prohibited on any lot immediately adjacent to any residential use. And tonight's presented just adds the verbiage or within 100 feet of residential zoning district. Is that correct? And tonight's presented just adds the verbiage or within 100 feet of residential zoning district. Is that correct? Or is there, am I missing something?
It should be within a, it should be an and instead of an or.
Okay, because yes, what I'm reading says or, so and within 100 feet of a residential zoning district. So if this is actually a restrictive ordinance than the original?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So am I the only one that's, I mean, it does say, sorry, that's my bird. It does say or, correct? And I'm looking above the financial impact. So that should say, okay, just making sure.
Any anyone else have a question or comment?
Back to me again. So if it's if we keep with the and, then that that would restrict other commercial areas or would it be, it wouldn't be a variant to the ordinance if they were were wanting to put something in that was within the 100 feet? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't get all that. There the, if you keep, if you go with the and, which I apologize, that's a typo on my error. But if you go with the and, then it should, then it would be adjacent to any residential use and within 100 feet. So it didn't, I was just using Hazlet Parkway as an example. If it went on 156, it would be within 100 feet and adjacent to residential use. So it's it is more restrictive. Did I answer your question?
So so possibly where are where there are not commercial uses now, but could potentially be in the future where major streets intersect where the property owner, whether there's anything on that property now or not, or maybe there's even a house there now, but sometime in the future decided that that was a a good place to put some commercial, a commercial project. Now, it it might not be a gas station. And I'm not suggesting that we need more gas stations up and down 156. But I think there are possible commercial areas that could be negatively impacted if we if we make this ordinance more restrictive than was originally suggested.
So Wes, this is the mayor. I I hate to be dense here, but when I'm reading, it says gasoline sales pumps would be prohibited on any lot immediately adjacent to any residential use. What's the definition or how how do you interpret any lot immediately adjacent to any residential use? I I I'm not clear what that actually means.
Well, residential use would be any, I mean, it could be a multifamily use, not that we have them here, but if they ever come, it could be a multifamily use. It could be a, it could be anything residential purpose. That's that is something that actually was talked about. I don't think it was talked about at the actual meeting. I think a PNC member brought up to me in a separate conversation, but the question was, did you want to do a residential use or did you imply a residential zoning district? And and because some residential uses are not in residential zoning districts, we we left it at residential use, but it's anything that is considered residential per definition of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So this is Mayor Pro Tem. Does anyone know how far the quicks, the current in place quick stop is from the near, from Hazlet Park?
You mean the first house? Yeah, the first house on Odessa. Go ahead.
That, I'm just asking a question. Here, but I believe that was 50 feet or so?
And and it's not, it's not the house, the way this reads, it's from the the end of the property, is it not?
That is correct.
That's really where my question was coming from. It's not, it's not X number of feet from the house, it's X number of feet from the residential lot.
That is correct.
Okay.
You're reading that correctly.
So do the people in Hazlet Park object to that quick stop being there? Which was first?
I I apologize. I didn't look that information up. I but I I don't know which came first in that case. And I this, since this is not a type of public hearing that you would do property owner notice for, I haven't gotten any response back from any property owners on this.
Right, and someone who lives in Hazlet Park, it doesn't, I'm fine with that, but I'm two blocks up. I don't know how the the person that lives on that first house on Odessa feels. I don't know.
Well, it was just mentioned earlier, you know, by Mr. Halsey that 1,000 feet, you know, they might object to, maybe it needs to be 1,000 feet. Well, I don't think that's how far the nearest house in Hazlet Park is. And do those people object? I haven't ever heard anything.
If we if we did the adjacent verbiage only, then say we have a a track of land that's vacant now, somewhere along 156, that is adjacent to an existing residential house. Let's say it that residential house backs up to this vacant track, then there's the vacant track, then there's 156. So if we leave just the adjacent verbiage, then a developer could come in and create a split that property up in a way that separates in the commercial use from the residential use and protects the residential use without having to have a 100 feet or 200 feet or 1,000 feet between between the the commercial development that is right up on the the state highway and still protects the residential. But if we put any kind of square, I'm sorry, not square footage, but footage there, then it's again, well, it's just more restrictive. So I guess we just have to decide if we want to be more restrictive or we want to just try to achieve what the original ordinance was trying to achieve, which is to protect adjacent properties where someone lives now and maybe their next door neighbor sells out and because it's on a state highway or because it's on a are y'all getting, hearing me echo, I apologize. I'm hearing some feedback. Anyway, I just feel like we need to decide how restrictive we want to be, and I I favor doing what the original ordinance set out to do.
Anyone else with an input?
Well, I think I asked this question earlier, but I wasn't sure if I posed it correctly. So if we do keep it the adjacent and the distance, if someone does want to put a gasoline sales pump, they would just apply for a variance, correct? That could either be denied or approved? That would be the proper procedure to go through? Is that is that correct?
That is, that is correct. However, I want to caution you, it would be a very, it would be a variance to the zoning requirements. And so it would go to CBA. So it would have to, and that would, y'all just did that tonight. So you're you're pretty fresh on what those criteria are. So it would have to meet one of those criteria. That's
That helps. Thank you.
So this is the Mayor Pro Tem. You know, I I'd like to maybe postpone this decision to the next meeting. So it could have maybe a little more time for public comment if we get any and think about this, you know, a little, a little bit more. The idea of making it even more restrictive, you know, is something I hadn't thought about. And it's like, well, so that means we've probably put in the last gas pump in Hazlet. Or is is it only in the industrial areas that we can, you know, put a grocery store with a gas pump like they all have now? So, you know, I just like, you know, I'm I'm ready to make a motion that we table it or continue it to the next meeting. If the other, if the rest of you agree. And if you want to vote on it tonight, will somebody make that motion too?
Can I respond, Warren? That we had a public hearing already. So I feel like that our that our public has spoken, and in fact, they actually have spoken again this evening unless someone else hasn't spoken yet. So I I'm ready to make a motion unless someone else objects.
Go ahead.
So I move that we approve the, let me see, make sure I get the right norm nomenclature here. I'm moved to approve ordinance 002-2021, amending Chapter 14, Section 4.2.5H of the Code of Ordinances as originally approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is there a second?
This is Harold. I second.
Any further discussion? So a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
I'm gonna vote no.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborne?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes four to one. On to 12B, continued from 2121, discuss, consider an act upon authorizing a project to convert the sand volleyball court in the community park to a net sport hard surface. Jim, is this going to be Travis?
Yes, this is Travis.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. After the February 1st meeting, the discussion had come up of whether tennis courts would be more appropriate use for converting the sand volleyball area. Originally, it was going to be just a straight pickleball court, but looking further into it, staff checked out whether tennis would be would would be able to fit. First thing to look at was whether a single tennis court would fit within the space. And it's obviously bigger than the sand volleyball court. A single tennis court would fit within the space there. Staff had already looked at previously a double tennis court off of First Street. And the the tennis court does barely fit there. But I did want to share some additional information with council that I just received today about tennis court orientation. So tennis court orientation, because of how the sun rises and sets in North Texas, the ideal tennis court orientation is 17.25 degrees rotation. So whether that's of true north or opposite of true north. So that that is what gives the tennis player the proper sunlight, so they're not looking in the sun when they're serving. It also makes the nets cast different shadows. So I wanted to share that the area on First Street puts that orientation of that tennis court at about 43 degrees. So that's well off of what the recommend recommended orientation is. So that area, while it fits, is not the most ideal area to be in. The single tennis court, the orientation is almost true north-south. So it it's better than than the optimal orientation because the sun, the sunrise will will not be in your eyes, basically. But looking at it today, I think that single court could be rotated to that 17.25 degrees. It would just be an opposite, it would turn the the court, you know, a little to the right, almost in line with the trail right next to it. On the single court, there would be a relocation of one of the disc golf holes. The throwing area would have to be moved a little bit just because of the size of the tennis court. The single tennis court would not remove any trees within the park. The double court would remove some trees. Again, on First Street, not the ideal location. And then just late today, I was just looking to see about a double court in in community park. If you rotated that 17.25 degrees, basically flip the single court to double court and have a trail relocation, that is potential there. Just fitting in on paper, don't have survey on the ground, don't have anything like that. It's just kind of a fit in with GIS right now. So staff is seeking direction on on what you would like to proceed on with. Single tennis court, double tennis court, location, everything there. For the single tennis court, I think we could get there with current budgeted resources of 75,000 just because the topography on that single court area is pretty flat. There's not going to be a lot of dirt work involved. The double court, I have not priced out. There it's a, depending on where it goes, if it goes on First Street, there's utility relocations. If it goes in the park, there's trail relocations. So staff is just seeking direction on on what you would like to see in in the park as far as a tennis facility. With that, I'll turn it over.
Travis, are there, well, okay, counsel, I guess, number one, we're only, we're only budgeted from your, not this year, but last year's budget for one tennis court. I know there was a suggestion made by a citizen that I received today about taking some of the park money that they haven't used for events. And that's really, I I'd be hesitant for council to to even ask council to consider that without having that go back to the park board because that that's going to require a budget amendment and or their discussions about, you know, we we gave them the option at the last meeting, if I remember correctly, to to delay and or change the dates, you know, they've got, they have some latitude to try to come up with events from, I think, August 1 on through the remainder of the of the fiscal year, and then and certainly the calendar year added on to that. So we we, number one, do do we want to consider two? And then if we are, then we have to come up with a way to finance that. And I'd also ask Travis, as I ramble here, I'm sorry. Is there any other location in the city that you're aware of, Travis, where we could even consider a tennis court at this time?
There's all, there's Fire Station Park does have some room within that master plan where it could be considered. The issue with Fire Station Park really is that there's no facilities there. There is electric conduit. There's not electric facilities. There's also no restroom facilities there. So that that'd be the only kind of tripping stone there to to having it down at Fire Station Park. But it is possible. There's room. Again, I haven't priced out anything to know how it fits in there, where it goes, but we can certainly look at that.
Counsel, if you have no objections, I was notified that there'd be one or two ladies tennis players who are on the call that might want to offer anything. If if there's no objections, and I'll give counsel a chance to object first. If there are no objections, I'd like to give one or both of those ladies an opportunity to comment because a lot of us don't have any tennis experience here. Any objections from counsel? So are are either of those ladies on the call, anything that you'd want to add to the discussion that we've had so far?
Yes, this is Kitty Wertz, and I live at 205 Thistle Drive. And I really would like to see two courts be built in our community park, if at all possible. I I do, I'm the one who suggested that there might be an increased budget funds with revenues that haven't been used due to our unfortunate necessity to cancel events because of COVID-19. I know that the funds to install tennis courts is fairly large as a initial input. But when you look at the benefit that we will receive from having tennis courts in the community, not only can we play tennis, but we'll be able to play more pickleball. And as you guys have already seen, pickleball has really increased in our community immensely since we were able to play pickleball under our cover-covered sports area. And this just allows more room for doubling the pickleball courts on tennis courts. And it seems to me the most cost-effective way of installing tennis courts would be a double court instead of a single court. And if all we're looking at is moving a path out of the way to make room for a double court, it's certainly way more economical. in our budget system to go with two courts instead of one. I think, and I know we haven't really seen what the costs are, but it's probably the fencing that goes around the court that is the largest chunk of money that it takes to put the court in. And it just makes more sense to do double courts now, if our budget will permit that. And that's certainly what I am in favor of. And I'll let Barbara speak up. I think she might be on the line, too.
This is Barbara Long. Thanks, Kitty. This is Barbara Long at 121 Schreiber Drive. And one thing that I'll just add on before I talk about the courts, that Kitty said, is that tennis courts have a pretty long life and low maintenance. It's like the Parks guys aren't gonna have to get out there and do much with those courts once they're installed. And they have a long life. So you have to kind of think of that money being spent, well, it's all spent upfront. Think of it as being divided over 20 years. And then it doesn't seem like such a large amount to provide such a nice service for the community. I do think where that sand volleyball court is, I'm looking at the picture that's there, that with that rotation and a little adjustment, maybe, not that one, that's, yeah, there it is. So if you can see if that were, if the tail end swung around to the left a little bit, then the sidewalk that would have to, concrete work that would have to be moved a little bit is there to the right of it. And maybe that could be scooted up. I don't, I can't see what's up north of that. But if that could be scooted up a little bit, so it doesn't impact the structures that are already there quite as much, I do believe that would fit there, and that that would be a good location for that. And anyway, I just think the community would really appreciate it. The other thing I'd like to comment on, and you mentioned the Parks Board, and at our last meeting, I can, I think I can report that we tabled planning any additional events until after we found out if additional monies were needed for this project. And that was, the board agreed with that, is that we want to move the projects through that we have started and initiated. And if we needed to use some of that money to help with this project, then that's what we would prefer to do. So now you know that. So all that about planning something for the, for August or September has been put on hold until we saw what direction was gonna happen with the tennis/pickleball courts.
Thank you, ladies, for both of your participation. We appreciate it. I'll lead with a couple of questions. Travis, we're talking about a possibility of a double court. Is that possible with moving that trail in the picture that we see on our screen right now? Can you align that to where you've got double court side by side and just move that? And then I guess we have, we have a change to the disc golf then, too, do we not?
Yes, there'd still be a slight change to the disc golf. I have a, I have a picture. I'm not sure if I could share that, because it wasn't distributed prior to this meeting. Diana or Rob, could you comment on that?
So part of my point here, folks, is, go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, I can make you the presenter, Travis. Hold on just one second.
So while they're doing that, part of my comment is, is that there's less dirt work in this location in the park. If we try to move it further to the northwest, closer to the railroad tracks, that's on a real incline. Plus, a lot of the small kids use that for soccer and football practice. And I'd rather keep that where it was. My personal view on that, not a decision maker. Go ahead.
Okay, so here's just a sketch of what I put in today. That's that orientation with the 17.25 degree turn and kind of showing the trail where it would swing out. Looking at it, just at a, you know, thousand-foot level, it doesn't impact the soccer, football field area there. Does impact some trees, as you can see here. But it would theoretically fit. Again, we would have to do a survey and make sure that everything's gonna actually line up in there. But you are correct in that this is the flat area of the park with the slight trail alignment, that realignment, that it would be possible to put the double court in there.
Part of the point I would make also, then, is that one court was gonna cost us roughly 75, and that's gonna change a little bit, so we can't hold Travis to that estimate. Two courts would cost us 150, moving the trail, moving the disc golf, and other things that I haven't even thought about. You know, now we're talking 200 instead of 75, so we gotta come up with 125. I'll play devil's advocate, and all those things that the Park Board had canceled based on our direction not to do anything until at least the 1st of August. We've only got two months left in the year to to commit to this project, and then Marcy can hold on to the money. I would think that it would be worth delaying this another two weeks and allow Travis, and we need some guidance, not just from the mayor here, but to see if it's even possible. And then are council members willing to triple the size of the money allotted from 75 to close to 200? You know, there's no sense telling him to try to plan this and give us some details, do the survey, whatever, if council's not willing to consider that. So, some discussion from you folks now.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. This is Hilborn. Travis, your picture's gone, but I think I can still see in my mind. It looks like it's gonna take out a couple of big trees to do that. Am I correct about that? And my other question is, do you know what the cost per linear foot of that trail is that we just finished? That would have to be moved? Just off the top of your head, so we can kind of, I mean, it looks like it's just a little concrete slab, but it actually was quite an extensive project. Do you have any idea on that?
Sure, this is the original trail in the park, so it's been there for a fairly long time. It's an eight-foot trail. It shouldn't be drastically expensive, just concrete, eight-foot trail. But you're correct on the trees, and depending on how we can move that court around and push it, this is right up on the edge of the park where the property line is. So even though, you know, it looks like park around there, there's actually a property line that you couldn't cross. So some trees would come out, and the trail, like I said, it's an eight-foot trail. It's more than a sidewalk, but not as much as a street, is how I could describe that.
So if we rotate one, one, just consider we're only doing one court, just for discussion purposes, and we rotate it to make it optimal for the sun, does that take out part of that trail anyway, just with one court?
No, I think I could, I think I can rotate it within the confines of where it's at right now, to make sure that the one court would fit rotated for the sun. And probably missing trees, but still needing to move disc golf throwing area.
And there would be no way to add two courts without losing the trail on the left? Like pushing it farther to the east or northeast? You mentioned property line and elevation.
Right, you end up over a property line.
So if you rotate that one, I'm assuming you're rotating it clockwise, are you not?
Correct.
And what happens if you put one on the opposite side of the trail? Do we run out of property right there, just immediately to the west of that, or whichever direction that is? Instead of taking the trail out, could you put it on the other side of the trail?
You would be impacting the football, soccer area of the park.
Okay. Okay, so Travis is looking for direction. I've asked too many questions. One court, two court? You know, I think this is our chance to get two, if we want to try. I'd be willing to give them two weeks to come up with a better idea on what it will look like and what it will cost. Marcy can help us with the, I'm asking Jim, but can we? Can we get a better feel, or do y'all already have your thoughts ironed out? I'm not sure.
I agree with the two instead of one. If the space is available and the cost isn't, is reasonable. And so are you talking about, and taking, seeing if there is any monies available from Parks Board to offset? Is that what you're just?
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see that go back to Park Board. I know Ms. Long said that they, I mean, I believe her. If we're leaning that way, that pretty much negates them doing anything, any activity through the remainder of the year. If we're gonna use that as the primary addition to the money, I would think. But I don't really remember off the top of my head how much money's in each of those pots. I'd be willing to continue this to the next meeting, ask Travis to come back with a construction plan or survey, whatever the right term is, and then ask Marcy to help us with some creative accounting on how we might finance this, how we might find the money, excuse me, not finance it, how we might find the money in the budget to see if this is possible.
First of all, Travis will go back and redesign and see if he can get that piece of, two tennis courts, that piece of property, what it would cost regarding relocation of the trail. The trees, I think what we need to do, if remove the big trees, is plant more trees, caliper trees, to make up the difference. And you may also screen some of the tennis court. I think the money for the special events, I can't remember, but I think it's like $60,000 or $70,000 total regarding Wild West Pass, Fourth of July, things like that. So Marcy will get those numbers together. We'll have a better idea and a complete package to you by March 16.
So, Counsel, are you comfortable with that? And if you are?
Mayor, this is Hilborn. I'm comfortable. Do you need a motion to continue it?
Yes, ma'am, I think we do, if everybody's comfortable with us getting to that point. Yes.
So I may, we continue this item to the next city council meeting to allow our staff to come up with some further details, including costs for two tennis courts with all that is required to make that possible. And for our financial director to determine where the funds could come from. And then we can actually really consider whether we can do this.
I second.
Harold seconds. Any further discussion? Thanks for your help on that, Jim. Let's do a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you all. 12C, discuss, consider an act regarding a development agreement between the city and TM Sweetgrass LLC, the developer of Haslet Pid #8 Sweetgrass, confirming the design standards for the Sweetgrass development.
I think Rob Alabon's gonna handle this, and if the developer's attorney is available, she may answer questions also.
I just see, yes, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to address this. I just saw Cory pop up on the screen. So Cory, please feel free to add to what I have to say, or whatever you think is needed on this. But Counsel, you'll recall, this has to do with the Sweetgrass development, that the developer, TM Sweetgrass, has entered into a contract to purchase this property, about 294 acres on the north side of Blue Mountain Road, about a mile east of FM 156 in the city, to develop it as a master planned fixed-use development, mostly residential, some commercial up on the north end. The council approved the rezoning of this property through a planned development zoning ordinance back in January. That planned development zoning ordinance establishes development standards for this property, including exterior building material standards, and requires that the development be done in accordance with that PD, the Planned Development Zoning Ordinance, and generally, in conformity with the city's, all of the city's regulations, requirements as set out in that Planned Development Zoning Ordinance. You'll also recall, in the last legislative session, our esteemed Texas Legislature passed House Bill 2439, which added provisions to the Texas Government Code and generally provides that the city may not enforce a rule or an ordinance or a building code that prohibits or limits the use of a building product or material in either a residential or commercial building if that material is approved for use in National Model Building Code within the last three building cycles. So, basically what that means is, if the adopted building code says that metal is a permitted exterior building material, our legislature has said that you, the city, cannot force somebody to put up masonry. And if they want to build a metal structure, you have to allow that to occur. That, the way, the only exception to that, basically, is if the developer agrees to the more stringent standards through a development agreement, then those standards can be enforced. So obviously, since this new law came about, we have, that's what we've been doing with these developments. That's what we did with the Watercrest development, which came along after this bill passed. And so what we've done is prepare a development agreement with the developer, which makes the exterior building standards of the Planned Development Zoning Ordinance enforceable. So that's what's being presented tonight. This development agreement is basically the same type development agreement with the same general terms and conditions as was done on the Watercrest agreement. It just attaches to this document the planned development standards that were adopted by the council in that Planned Development Zoning Ordinance. The developer also has agreed to include those design standards in the deed restrictions on the property, which then can be enforced by the other property owners in development. So your Pid Subcommittee members have reviewed this development agreement, as has your staff, and recommends approval. On Friday, Councilmember Hilborn, review, in reviewing the document, asked to add a couple of definitions document, which proved the document did not change really substantively, but added some definitions that helped clarify some previously undefined terms. And those were done on Friday, and I forwarded that out to each of you, a redlined version showing those changes that are incorporated into the document we're asking to approve tonight. And with that, I guess I would see if there's anything that the Pid Subcommittee members want to add, or anything that the developer or their attorney want to add to this item that we're presenting to you.
Anyone representing the developer have anything to add to Rob Alabon's presentation?
No, sir, I think he did a great job explaining. It's just to ensure that the city is able to enforce the planned development zoning that's already been approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, questions, comments?
Now, this is the Mayor pro tem. I just wanted, that was a very good explanation, Rob, and I appreciate that, because I think many of the citizens don't understand that. It was the legislature that put us in this position. So that's the reason we're doing so many planned developments these days. It's not to get around city standards, although we are willing to make a trade between the amount of grass somebody has to mow to put that into common areas that a lot of potential buyers propose. It does not mean that the house is any less. It's the same number of houses in this development, as if they were half acre. The developer minimum cost on the smallest lot is $385,000. And that's before dollars, and that's before any add-ons that the potential buyer might ask for. So there's a lot of other existing houses and Haslet that are nowhere near $385,000.
This is Councilmember Hillborne. I'm also on the Pid Subcommittee. And I want to really commend our city attorney for his review of these documents and making them as stringent as we can make them to make the subdivision meet the standards that Haslet wants to have in Haslet. It's a good document. It's an administrative process at this point to just approve this document that will hold the developer to these standards. Thanks.
Yes, and counsel, I'd just say, I know Cory would add this as well. I mean, the developer obviously isn't, wants to build a quality development here and wants to build a good product. And the reason this development agreement is necessary is, as Mayor Pro Tem pointed out, is really basically due to the change in the law. And we'll see if the legislature makes any revisions or modifications to that down the road. But that is why I went through a more detailed explanation on this. You've seen this type of agreement before, but I knew there were a number of people in on this meeting that may not have heard that material before, and wanted to make sure that that explanation was given. So, thank you.
Anyone else from counsel have a comment or question? If everyone's comfortable, does someone want to make a motion then?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that the council approve the development agreement between the city and TM Sweetgrass LLC for Haslet Pid number eight, Sweetgrass, as presented and authorize the execution of the development agreement.
Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tem, a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. 12D, discuss, consider an act to authorize an escrow agreement between the city and the owner of the land with then proposed Haslet Public Improvement District number eight, Sweetgrass, regarding a petition for dissolution of the Pid in the event the development does not proceed. Rob?
Thank you again. This will be me for a couple of items here. So I'll try and make this short, and this is again, an item you've seen before on our previous Pid district and Pid developments. The Pid Act, the law, the statute states that once a Pid district is created, it can only be dissolved after a public hearing and upon a petition requesting dissolution by the requisite number or percentage of the property owners of the district. So as you know, with our very first Pid, there was a situation that the city created the Pid and the development did not proceed, potentially he's timely. And on all of the subsequent Pids, we wanted to have some sort of mechanism in place to dissolve the Pid in the event that something happens and the development does not proceed. So what we've done is create a system where the owners go ahead and owners go ahead and submit a petition to dissolve the Pid in the event that development does not proceed. Then that is escrowed with me as city attorney, and I hold that in escrow and basically goes away if the development proceeds like everybody thinks it will proceed. In the event something happens and development does not timely proceed, then either the city or the owner can use the petition to dissolve the Pid and dissolve the pit. So in this instance, current owners of this property, Fort Worth Railroad Salvage owns a larger piece of this property, and TM Sweetgrass has that under contract, which I believe is scheduled to close by the end of this month. TM Sweetgrass owns a smaller portion of the property as of this date. So both of those that we, those are the current owners. Current owners have signed petitions to dissolve. And then there's also provision in this agreement that in the event that the property is sold to a third party before contracts to build the authorized improvements are done, then the new landowner is required to sign dissolution petitions as well. So basically, this just protects the city and provides a mechanism to solve the Pid in the event that things do not move forward as planned within the timeframe, timeframe set out in the agreement. So with that, again, this is basically the same thing you've done on all of the previous cash flow Pids, cash or reimbursement Pids that the city's approved. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have. And I'd again ask the Pid Subcommittee members or staff or developer attorney if they have anything to add as well.
Anybody have anything?
Mayor, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Anyone else? If y'all are comfortable, I would entertain a motion then.
So this is Councilmember Hillborne. I move that the council approve the escrow agreement between the city, the current owners, and the future owner relating to Haslet Public Improvement District number eight, Sweetgrass, as presented.
Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tem, seconds.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing done, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborne?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Five zero. 12E, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act regarding Resolution 003, 2021, authorizing and creating Haslet Public Improvement District number eight regarding the Sweetgrass development and authorizing required notice thereof.
Mayor and counsel, as mayor, as you just read, you will need to hold a public hearing on this before you open that up. It's okay with you. Go ahead and give my staff report on this. Again, this, so the other items we've done tonight were prerequisites. We wanted to get adopted before we actually create the Pid. This item tonight is actually to create Public Improvement District number eight, or the Sweetgrass Development. Owners of the property have petitioned the city to create the Pid. And the statute, Pid statute requires that the governing body hold a public hearing on the advisability of creating the Pid and advisability of the improvements that will be built within the Pid. Notice of this public hearing was provided as required by the act, published in the paper, and that was all timely done by your city staff for this public hearing tonight. So after holding the public hearing, the act requires that the governing body pass a resolution with certain findings. These findings are all set out in the proposed resolution that's before you. That is that the improvements, the improvements are advisable to be done, setting out what the nature of the improvements are, the estimated cost of the improvements, the boundaries of the Public Improvement District, method of assessment, then the apportionment of the cost between the district and the city. In this Pid district, as with the other reimbursement or cash flow Pids that the city has done, this is the same process and procedure. The resolution authorizes the creation of the district. Resolution contains those findings that property will be benefited by the construction of the authorized improvements. Those improvements are feasible and will promote the interest of the city and confer a special benefit on the property within the district. Again, it's important to note that all of the city's expenses relating to this Pid, creation of the Pid, administration of the Pid are paid for out of, either by the developer who has escrowed funds with the city for the city's costs incurred to create the Pid or through the Pid assessments on the property that go towards paying the ongoing Pid administration expenses. So city's general fund is not funding the creation or the administration of this Pid. So with that, your Pid Subcommittee has reviewed the resolution and has recommended, after public hearing, that the council adopt this resolution to actually create Pid number eight. And again, with that, I'd see if there's anything that Subcommittee or the developer wants to add on that, or I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Anything that the Pid Subcommittee would like to add?
Rob, would you elaborate just really briefly of what the improvements are so that anyone who maybe didn't have a chance to look at the document knows the types of improvements this Pid is talking about?
I can, although I might pitch it to Cory, since you're on the line. Do you want to add that, or do you want me to try and address that?
Sure. So the types of improvements are going to be the infrastructure necessary to serve as well as some perimeter roads and internal roads, doing adequate drainage for all of the property amenities as far as enhanced landscaping, open space trails. Those are the general types. Each is approved, is an approved authorized improvement under the Public Improvement District statute.
So that, and that's on top of, I mean, the other authorized improvements are the, are normal, water sewer, drainage, street improvements, then also some of those additional things such as the enhanced landscaping and trails and trails for this interconnect with the other trails, the other developments, surrounding developments that will be open to the public.
If I could add just one quick thing, a lot of these improvements are located on our master plans. So water master plan, thoroughfare master plan, wastewater master plan. These development, this development completes part of those master plans that the city has put forward.
Thank you, Travis. This is the mayor. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against Resolution 003, 2021.
Mayor, this is Gary Halsey. I've given my name to the city secretary on this item.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Now, I oppose this Pid. Grounds are that I opposed the planned development in itself and that it does not comply with the comprehensive plan and therefore does not comply with the local government code. I find it entertaining that earlier Mayor Pro Tem said, regard to the agreement that was put in place earlier, that the legislature put us in this position and that there's some trade-offs and concessions as to amount of how much grass is mowed versus a lot size and building materials, all that weaved together. But nonetheless, what we traded at concession home was our city standards. That's what we conceded. So again, I oppose this Pid, I oppose the planned development basis and the I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item?
Yes, Hector Nada here?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I oppose as well. Just a question, if it's the same number of houses we're going to go on this thing, if they were half an acre, why don't I just keep it to half an acre lot like the city ordinance says? Can you explain that to us?
I can try, but I don't represent the developer. I mean, my understanding was that if he went to the total one house per half acre and the number of houses and the number of acres, he would completely remove any green space that he had, the trail system and those kinds of amenities. That was my understanding, but I'm not trying to support their position. Is there anyone here from the developer that would like to address that?
Mayor, this is Brett Pettigo with Terramana, 101 Claritin Ranch Road. I'm happy to answer that. You know, I think there's been several comments made about whether this meets the comprehensive plan or not. I think anybody that says that it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan tends to read half of the comprehensive plan and the half that would only support a half acre development. But there are tools given within that comprehensive plan. It is very clear of what those tools are, and that is if we trade off, and I'll use a word that was used by the previous speaker, trade off an item. It is, all we're doing is moving the product and the lot sizes around and allowing for us to have a mixed use of product within the development. It's our, it is the way we do our developments. That's how we build them, that's how we plan for them. And it's to try to provide a diversity of product that everybody that comes into our development may have a choice. They may want a half acre lot, they may want a smaller lot with less maintenance. And it's not necessarily a trade-off in the value so much of what they're getting inside the homes and what it, it's really a trade-off of their lifestyle. And there's a lot of people that want to live in Haslet on a half acre lot, and we understand that. We develop half acre lots in Haslet, and there's going to be plenty more lots that are half acre lots in Haslet to support everybody that wants to live on those type of lots. The lots that we're also providing as an additional menu item or an option is for a smaller lot. And to do that, we provide open space to offset that and allow for that maintenance to be taken care of through the HOA. So again, we are using the comprehensive plan. We're using the tools within the comprehensive plan, and we're really just trying to create a diversity of product within the development so that for people that are looking for one acre lot or half acre lots, they can find it. And if they want smaller lots, they can also find that too. So there's giving anybody that comes to the neighborhood options instead of only having one option in an entire part of town. The other thing we recognize is that whenever you do that one option and you look at what infrastructure has been supported in the past on those type of developments within Haslet, you can't build the necessary infrastructure to support those developments with that type of development. With this development, you can. We've proven it over and over again. Caraway with the vines, with Watercrest, and now with this development where we're going to spend almost $10 million in roadway improvements that have never been done before on any other developments ever proposed and done in Haslet on half acre lots. So again, we're providing these tools to allow to almost catch up for some of the, I'm going to say, the past mistakes of not building the proper infrastructure with the development. And that's why the Pid is necessary at this point as well. So hopefully that answers all the questions. If there's anybody has any other comments, I'm happy to answer.
Just a comment, that doesn't really answer the question. Is the number of houses would be the same whether it was half acre lots than what it is now, what the proposal is? Can you say for a fact that that is the case?
I can make that case, yes, because the gas wells are not always going to be there. I know everybody kind of gets used to them and thinks they're going to be there. The floodplain, we can provide floodplain mitigation through that, through piping and doing some of those things that take those into a pipe underground. That's going to be very costly in the future for the city to maintain those improvements. And it's, you know, so if you're just looking at all the open space and the things that are out there and say, well, some of that's in floodplain, there's other ways to mitigate that. But, you know, if you, I mean, the typical development density for a the typical development density for a half acre lot is about 1.6 to 1.8 units per acre. But again, that's not what the, that's not what the comprehensive plan states. So I mean, you're trying to somehow come back in and rewrite the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan says that you stay below two units per acre and that you provide open space and other amenities to offset that. We're at about 1.7 units per acre. So we're below that threshold. We meet the requirements of the comp plan. And that's what was approved in the zoning. This item is not regarding that. So your question is really not even relevant to what the comprehensive plan states.
Well, the reason I ask this question is because Mayor Pro Tim said that there would, the same, the houses would be the same amount whether it was half acre or not. And that's the reason I asked the question. And I don't have an answer yet.
I think I've answered the question several times, but again, the, why is the question relevant if we're talking about comprehensive plan issues?
I guess.
Are you familiar with what the comprehensive plan states? Are you familiar with what the comprehensive plan states?
Not to the detail, but I am familiar with the city ordinance and this doesn't follow it.
The comprehensive plan is the city ordinance. So do we want, I mean, why don't you read the comprehensive plan to me on the section about the two units per acre?
Well, I just had a simple question that you can't seem to answer it.
No, I've answered it.
Okay.
So it is the same number of houses?
I can make the same number of houses on that property with the half units, half acre units.
That was my question.
And Mr. Naher, would you give us your address, please, sir? You neglected to when you checked on.
402 Summer Drive.
We just need that for the record for Ms. Diana. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else?
From Mr. Pettigo, he seemed to go out of his way with Hector.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Mr. Pettigo, may I, may I have one comment, sir?
You waved your time. I'll give you a chance. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Is that, Mr. Pettigo, if you read that comprehensive plan, you'll find an example just out of coincidence was used for that very piece of property you're developing. That comp plan says 246 homes.
And it shows a.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Halsey, but you also.
Example as well of 246 homes. So what you use was a grossing factor of 296 acres and you could get 588 homes on it. Well, we'd all had to park on Blue Mound Road and walk across the yards to get to our house. No one would buy it, and you know that. So you can't put the number of homes out there.
Mr. Halsey, you want me to respond to that?
Oh, you can if you want.
So I, I just want to make sure that you understand that the diagram that you're looking at also doesn't include all the acreages included in our, our plan. There is a piece of property that was left out of that piece of property. So I mean, there's about another 70 to 80 acres of land that was not included in that example. And that's an example. There's other examples in the comp plan that if you look at some of the pieces of property that we own on Caraway that show more of a higher density than what we've done on Caraway. So if you're wanting to suggest that we do exactly what we did on the comp plan here, are you suggesting we should go back to Caraway and provide some higher density uses there?
No, I'm not. But on this, on the comp plan, I seem, you know, you just, Hector was asking a straightforward question, I thought, but you're going out of your way to me to chastise him over.
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure you understood the comp plan.
Okay, that's good. Is there anyone else who has anything, any, anyone to say for or against this item?
Good evening, Mayor Golden and council members. This is Cory Admire, 9406 This Kane Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. I am authorized to speak on behalf of 100% of the landowners in the, of the property in the proposed public improvement district and all are in favor and support of the pit creation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Admire. Any, anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Mayor, this is Diana Buchanan. We did have Kitty Wertz say that she wanted to speak and thought she was on the call. Is she no longer available?
Ms. Wertz, are you on the call? She may left after the tennis courts. Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing then. Onto discussion, consideration and action. Comments, questions from council?
I think Mr. Alabon answered any questions that I had.
Any other questions or comments? Not to cut anybody off, but we still got a good bit of agenda to go with. If you're comfortable, I would entertain a motion then.
I have a question about the motion. Do I just say resolution blank at this point?
No, council member, this is Diana Buchanan. Please assign the number 003-2021.
And that's what's on the agenda. It may not be what's on the sample resolution.
I see that.
That's what's in the agenda. Okay.
I see that. So I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
This is council member Hilborn. I move that the council approve resolution 003-2021, authorizing and creating Haslett Public Improvement District number eight as presented and authorize the city secretary to publish notice of the creation of pit number eight.
Is there a second?
Harold second.
Harold seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes. 12F, discuss, consider an act regarding resolution 004 2021, accepting the preliminary service and assessment plan, including proposed assessment role for Haslett Public Improvement District number eight, Sweetgrass, setting a date for the public hearing and authorizing the publication notice.
Council, last pit related item tonight, has just approved the creation of pit district number eight for the Sweetgrass development. This item is a resolution to accept preliminary service and assessment plan that has been prepared, which also has the proposed assessment role attached to it. And then also will schedule a public hearing for the approval of the final service and assessment plan and the levy of the assessments at a future date. So pit subcommittee along with the developer and city's pit consultant, P3 Works have all worked in conjunction to prepare the preliminary service and assessment plan which identifies the improvements to be constructed and the estimated costs and prepares the assessment roles of the properties. And that is attached in your packet for your review. The subcommittee has met and reviewed that and has approved the preliminary service and assessment plan. Again, the act requires that the, that the council hold a public hearing before the levy of the assessments, which is the next step after tonight's meeting. So this resolution sets the date for that public hearing of March 15th, our next meeting for the levy of the assessments. The resolution authorizes the city staff to move forward with the publication of notice at public hearing. Also, if there, if there are already changes, what's in the preliminary service and assessment plan, if there's anything that, that needs to be changed as deemed appropriate by the council, that can occur before the final service and assessment plan is adopted. I think subcommittee and all of the members and staff have been through this and feel pretty, pretty good about the document. I hope you all have had a chance to review it. And I think, I think we are supposed to have somebody from P3 Works, the pit consultant administrator firm for the city. Hopefully he's online also to answer any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll, I'll stop and see if there's any questions. If there's anything that the developer wants to add to that presentation.
Rob, I don't know why, but this is the mayor. You were at least getting very, very quiet or shallow. I don't, very dim. You're hard to hear toward the end there. I, I hope everybody caught most of that.
Well, I am a little dim, so I'm sorry.
I didn't mean it that way. I'm, okay.
No, no. Sorry, I was just trying to be funny. But yes, if I need to repeat any of that, if, 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 I'm happy to.
That's better. How you sound now, Rob, is much better. Thank you.
Okay, scooted up a little closer to the monitor.
Does anyone, anyone feel like they need Rob to repeat anything of what he said? I thought I grasped it, but, but he was fading out just a little bit on, on my receiver anyway.
I apologize.
No, that's all right.
Join the club.
Sir?
Club on the fading technology. I, I suffered around this time too.
And any questions or comments with regard to this resolution 004 2021?
Mayor, I'd like to ask if Mrs. Buchanan could, could scroll through the document to page. It's page 337 of the agenda package. It's exhibit H4.
Did you say H as in Henry four?
Yes. That one. Okay, this is an exhibit of the major improvements. And I think this is a really a great illustration for anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to thoroughly read some of these documents that we're looking at tonight. Because it shows just how extensive and well planned the roadways are around this subdivision. If you recall earlier tonight, we had a lengthy report on the Haslett Parkway. You see at the very top of, of the drawing here, the segment of the Haslett Parkway that cuts across here where the main entrance to this subdivision is that enters this, this, where you enter the subdivision. And along the right side, it is a little bit harder to see on the screen, that Intermodal, which is as part of the Haslett Parkway project, is going to come down from the north from Westport Parkway to Haslett Parkway. But continuing here at Haslett Parkway is going to continue down to Blue Mound Road as part of the, the improvement that the developer is doing for the subdivision. You can see there are two entrances onto Intermodal from the, from, from the subdivision. So we've got the, the main entrance on Haslett Parkway, a new major Parkway, four lane, east west thoroughfare. We've got the two additional entrances on the east side of the subdivision that go to Intermodal, which also connects with Haslett Parkway. And at the bottom, you see another entrance onto Blue Mound Road. And you can see where the developer is going to be improving that stretch of Blue Mound Road where the subdivision impacts. So as far as the infrastructure in Haslett to support this subdivision, to support any of the subdivisions that we've been looking at, considering and approving, right here is a great illustration of how we're meeting that need. And I hope everyone can see this drawing. And if you can't, it's part of the agenda packet, which is on the city website. It's always, always transparent. It's always out there for you to see, certainly ask any questions. But this is just a great representation of how well planned the infrastructure is regarding this subdivision. So Diana, thank you for scrolling down to that page.
Any ones have any questions or comments? Hearing none. If we're comfortable, someone, somebody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I just, I just would throw out this, I think this is resolution 004-2021. Is that correct, Diana?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
So I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
This is council, council member Hilborn. I move that the council approve resolution 004-2021, accepting the preliminary service and assessment plan, including proposed assessment role for Haslett Public Improvement District number eight, Sweetgrass, setting March 15th, 2021 is the date for public hearing regarding the levy of the assessments and authorizing the publication of notice for the same.
Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tim seconds.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote then. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. 12G, discuss, consider an act regarding a community facilities agreement for Belgrade Estates.
This is Travis.
Good evening. This is Belgrade Estates, which is on FM 156, just south of the Meadow. This development has an improved final plat. They were on track to start construction last year. However, the pandemic kind of threw a wrench into things. They are back on track now. This is the community facilities agreement for this subdivision where they will be installing a street, water and sanitary sewer and some storm drain improvements. With that, I will turn it back over. The city attorney has, has reviewed this agreement. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Did I hear you say this was south of the Meadow? Is it, is it not north of the Meadow? Am I confused?
Yes, sir. North of the Meadow.
Okay.
Five years in, I still get the directions confused sometimes.
It could have very easily just have been me, Travis. Don't worry. Any questions or comments? If we're comfortable, I would entertain a motion.
This is council member Morrow. I move city council approve the community facilities agreement as presented and authorize the city administrator to indicate such with his signature.
Is there a second?
Clark second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. 12H, discuss, consider an act regarding a community facilities agreement for North Glen Phase Two.
Similar agreement. This was for North Glen Phase Two. They do have an approved plat. This is a community facilities agreement for water, sanitary sewer, roads and drainage.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? Anyone want to tackle a motion then?
This is Clark. I move city council approve the community facilities agreement as presented and authorize the city administrator to indicate such with his signature.
Is there a second?
Hilborn second.
Hilborn, thank you, ma'am. Any, any further discussion? If not, let's go to a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hilborn?
Aye.
Anya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. We're on the last page. 12I, discuss, consider an act regarding resolution 002 2021, supporting House Bill 1538 relating 12I, discuss, consider an act regarding Resolution 002-2021, supporting House Bill 1538 relating to proposed changes to the street maintenance tax provision of the Texas Tax Code. Is this Rob?
Yeah, I'm happy to address this, Mayor and Council. Some of you will probably recall the council in the past has either adopted resolutions supporting or opposing legislation that's pending down in Austin. There's a bill that was filed in this legislative session by Senator Nathan Johnson out of Dallas, a copy of which I attached. First of all, let me say, can y'all hear me okay or not?
No, we didn't hear quite a bit of that. So can you try to rewind a little bit?
Yeah, I'll scoot. You may only be seeing my bald head right now. I'm going to scoot up closer to my monitor. So is that any better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, so please avert your eyes from the shine off of my head. So you may recall that the council can support or oppose pending legislation in Austin. We have a bill, House Bill 1538, that was filed this legislative session, a copy of which I included in your packet for your review, relates to the street maintenance tax. As y'all know, we just had a reauthorization election in Haslett to reauthorize the street maintenance tax. So currently, the law on street maintenance tax says that you can only use street maintenance tax for maintaining and repairing existing streets and sidewalks. And that's it. Streets and existing streets and sidewalks. This bill would allow the proceeds of your street maintenance tax to also be used for water, sewer, or drainage infrastructure within the street right-of-way. So it expands the use of the street maintenance tax if it's passed. And then, secondly, this bill changes how often, or would change how often, you have to hold a reauthorization election. Currently, most cities have to hold a reauthorization election every four years, like we just did. There are a few cities that got legislation passed for them specifically. It's called bracket legislation, based on their population. There's a few cities that only have to renew every eight years or every 10 years. So what this proposed legislation would do is allow the reauthorization for all cities to be bumped to either eight or 10 years. So Senator Jane Nelson has requested that any cities within her district which utilize a street maintenance tax consider adoption of a resolution supporting this proposed House Bill 1538. So I drew up the resolution for your consideration to support the bill and those changes, if that's something that you're interested in doing. And if approved, we will forward a copy of this to, down to the legislature and to Senator Jane Nelson's office, and also the city manager of Coppel, who's assisting in gathering all these and heading them in the right direction. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions. Jim, do you have anything, Jim or the mayor, that you want to add to that?
Just the mayor, I'd be very much in favor of this. I think it just, it's an expense that we had to incur in November that otherwise we would not have had to do. So if nothing else, just to just to save some money.
This is Mayor Pro Tim. I think it's very gratifying to see the legislature doing something positive for cities instead of the opposite that they've done in the past. So I'm happy to support this.
Mayor, this is Travis. I would want to add something to this conversation because I just had a meeting with Jane Nelson's staff last week. So the American Society Civil Engineers that I'm very involved with, we've just released the report card for Texas Infrastructure. Texas graded a C, which is good, better than C minus, which we had last time. Would like to mention that Jane Nelson is really looking forward on infrastructure issues. And this bill absolutely supports that. So just throwing on my ASE hat for a little bit. And if anybody wants to see the report card, please email me and I will absolutely show you what it says. Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment? Who wants to be brave with their motion then?
I will. What ordinance number is it?
Resolution 002-2021.
I meant Resolution, sorry. Say it again.
002-2021.
Okay. I move that the council approve Resolution Number 002-2021, supporting House Bill 1538.
Is there a second?
Air Pro Tim, seconds.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Mayor Golden, Ms. Hillborn's having technical difficulty. She has chatted that her vote is aye.
I see your thumbs up. Thank you. I appreciate that. And Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you all. 12J, discuss, consider an act upon advertising for requests for proposals for the needs assessment, site selection, design, and cost estimates of a municipal complex.
This will be Wes.
Wes, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As y'all are aware, the strategic plan outlines, one of the pillars is a facilities and quality of life pillar. Part of that is looking at creating a master plan for a municipal complex. I've put together an RFP package that if y'all so choose, we can start advertising and start the process. That RFP outlines four primary tasks. One is assessment, review, existing facilities and needs, and what we will need based on our growth levels going forward for staff and facilities. Second would be the task two would be site analysis, looking at areas within our town that could meet the demand of what we're looking for as far as a municipal complex. Task three would be conceptual design, complex design. And then task four would be preliminary cost estimates. Again, if y'all so choose, staff can start advertising this and begin the process. I can answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions for Wes?
This is Barbara Long. I just have a quick question. I just wondered if, does this, it seems like this includes offices and you know, space for the city workers and all of that. I just wondered if it will also include a new, larger senior center? Or space for seniors to meet?
I think that was part of the general scope of what council was looking for when we had our strategic planning session, excuse me. But somebody else can chime in and correct me if I'm wrong there. So I think hearing none, Barbara, that is correct, that it was all-inclusive. What could we combine? What could we improve on? What could we expand? That was really what the intent was.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from council? Well, if y'all are comfortable with this, I would entertain a motion then.
This is Harold. I move to approve request for proposals for municipal complex master plan, design and sets, and direct staff to start advertising of accepting proposals.
Is there a second?
Air Pro Tim, seconds.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Mayor Golden, I, oh, she's there. Excuse me.
Yeah, I had to disconnect and reconnect, so I missed entire discussion. So if we're voting on this suggested motion that's on the agenda, I vote aye. Are we? Yes, then aye. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
That's good. Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. 12K, discuss, consider an act upon recommendations for the upcoming Tarrant County Transportation Bond Program.
All right, this is a bond program that Tarrant County is putting forward, similar to the one they put forward in 2006. Tarrant County has put out that they are looking for projects that focus on regional mobility. Projects that are already on the thoroughfare plan, projects that have a 50% funding match. And these need to be into Tarrant County in about middle of April. So I was tasked with looking at what projects could potentially be done in Haslett. And came up with five of them, and they are kind of ranked in the order of what is the most feasible. The first project is the Keller-Haslett Extension. This project has been on our thoroughfare plan for quite some time. It pulls the traffic from Fort Worth and also the BNSF rail yard out of Old Town. It directs it directly onto FM 156. One of the benefits of this project is that Tech Todd is currently looking at expanding FM 156. And we had a meeting about two weeks ago. I think it was right before the freeze happened.
Just hold just a second. Diana, can you go up two pages so we can actually see this one that he's talking about? There we go. Thank you. I'm sorry, Travis. Go ahead.
Oh, that's all right. So that they, one of the things that came out of their value engineering study was that there needed to be a median opening somewhere between Old Town and Intermodal Parkway. And I happened to mention that this is on our master thoroughfare plan. And they said, well, this seems like a great opportunity to build an actual street header from one FM 156 onto where this extension is. So they're looking at that right now, complete with turn lanes. We would be looking at it from the standpoint of how can we make the alignment work, getting this Keller-Haslett extension through the property, which would bring all that traffic into that intersection of FM 156. The total cost on this is estimated at about $4 million. Includes right-of-way. The second project that was looked at was as I-35W3, Segment 3C gets done, that Blue Mound Road East could be expanded or extended to that. This section would bring Blue Mound Road East from Harmon over to the frontage road. That would be a critical connection for Tarrant County. And that it would be, Blue Mound Road would extend from US 287 to I-35W. Tarrant County Judge Glenn Whitley has also, has always said that he wants to flip an east-west grid west of 35. So with completion of Haslett Parkway, Avondale Haslett Road, this adds another segment to that. This would also put in the roundabout there at Harmon and Blue Mound Road and open that land up for future potential development. Total cost on that's about $4.7 million. Those are the two highest priority projects that this office had come up with. Also had come up with a couple others just for consideration. The Blue Mound Road expansion, as was said earlier tonight, with the Watercrest and the Vines Development, Blue Mound Road alignment has been set. It could be expanded to a full four-lane section across the entire city limits of Haslett. That cost was $21 million. And then looking at a grade separation there at Blue Mound Road, it's been talked about that Avondale Haslett could be a grade separation. The issue with that is that the bridge would land somewhere east of Schoolhouse Road, bypassing all of the businesses there on FM 156. A better place for that grade separation would be Blue Mound Road, mainly because it's a smaller bridge. You have to still have 31 feet of clearance. But if you've driven Blue Mound Road, you know that that's a hill coming down. So the bridge would be a lot shorter, less retaining walls. Finally, the last project that was looked at was the Westport Parkway reconstruction and widening from the Westport CT project to Old Town. It's a three-lane section currently, asphalt section, that could be looked at as being expanded to a four-lane concrete section with a little bit of either reconstruction of the bridge or expansion of the bridge over Henrietta Creek. So those are the five projects that this office came up with. And with council's direction, we will prepare a resolution to go to Tarrant County as to which projects council feels are feasible for Haslett. And I believe Marcy has a presentation on potential funding.
Hey, Marcy.
Good evening, council. In your packet, we had included a couple of scenarios where, for the city's match, regarding these projects, that we would issue certificates of obligation to fund that match. And the different scenarios, one includes totally funding the entire match with city COs. And that one has a total principal amount, $4.35 million. And then the other scenario has a contribution to be proposed by the EDCs. And that would lower the city's portion of the match to $3.3 million. If, you know, if that was approved. The thoughts on that, I think, was that was right-of-way acquisition on those projects that the EDCs could possibly fund. And looking at the different scenarios, this would impact, COs do impact your tax rate. As you recall, there's an MNO portion to your tax rate, and there's a debt portion to your tax rate. And those two combined, your total tax rate. You also know that as our city is growing and our subdivisions are building out, our evaluation goes up. Our property valuation goes up. When our valuation goes up, the MNO portion of the rate goes down. So we're somewhat poised to be able to absorb these COs without impacting our tax rate in total terribly much. The report also has some historical debt portion tax rates for you to kind of consider. Just in the past, from 2016 on. If you were going to fund the tax rate, or fund the city's match with COs, and you were doing the whole entire $4.35 million, it would add approximately 5.66 cents per hundred dollars of value. You have had rates as high in 2016 as 5.2, and in 2018, 5.35, 2019, 5.3. And the last couple of years, it's been 3.8 and 3.3. And the debt portion of your tax rate goes down, one because of debt maturities and interest, as the debt matures, the interest rate goes, or interest portion of the debt goes down. So you have that to affect it. And so we're in a position right now where we don't have And so we're in a position right now where we don't have a lot of new COs that have been issued in the last couple of years. I think the last issue was in for Fire Truck. So I think we could look at that. CEO funding as a very feasible way to fund the fifty percent match. Should Tarrant County approve our projects that we wanted to propose if, if that's the council's desire.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim, Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot. Could you summarize from your perspective, the, the interchange that, that went, that happened last Thursday when we made this presentation? Well, actually, when Travis made this presentation and, and we, we exchanged ideas. Can, can you summarize?
Yes. Commissioner Fickers and staff heard our presentation. They were really thrilled with the Keller Hassett Road connection and the Blue Mound Road connection. Those are the ones they felt they could include in their program and, and fund in the, in the election. Since we're only, we have a fifty, fifty cent coupon, the impact on our budget is, is not going to be that much over the years. As Marcy said, our tax rate is dropping with the added valuation we're adding on, not only residentially but industrially. But he was very interested in those two projects. All we need to do is get a resolution passed on March fifteenth, submit to their office. They're going to be selecting projects. He gave us a good feel that ours would be included, did not make any promises. He's a, he's a, he has a lot of cities in his jurisdiction that he has to juggle projects for. But I got a very good feeling off those two projects that he would, he would include in his program.
Thank you, sir. And just to be perfectly clear, this would require that we would have a bond referendum, if that's the proper terminology, that would, that would be on a future ballot for our citizens to say yes or no. And, and for this to be, it's one thing for the project to be approved, but for the county to start construction before they start, we have to have shown that we can, we can put our fifty percent on the table. So.
I, I think the certificate of obligation are not subject to election. Craig Marcy?
That's correct. The certificates of obligation would not require a referendum.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Correct. Good correction.
Always have the right to petition if they feel that they, they need to have an election to approve those projects. I can't reiterate enough, our tax rate's fallen from thirty-two cents to twenty-four point nine cents in the last three years. So we're feeling the effects of increased valuation industrially and residentially. Because we had, you know, Amazon Air Hub come in, which is a pretty sizable development. And plus the Intermodal Commerce Park, CT Westport are going to be added to the rolls. So my opinion, the tax rate was, is not going to be dramatically affected by a four million dollar issue or so. And as we go along, so city's in a real good financial position. We have a large reserve fund. We're funding capital projects and choosing plan and other capital projects. The enterprise fund is growing. But yes, there'll be a certificate of obligation issue that we can.
Any questions or comments?
This is Hillborn. Okay, so the Keller Hassett Extensions looks like a dream come true to be able to give an alternate route that does not include coming into Old Town and going down Main Street.
Yes.
For all that area up north of there, which is going to continue to develop. The, the land outside of, of Hasslet is going to develop, that traffic is going to increase. Hasslet won't be able to control that, that growth because it's not in Hasslet. So those, the cars that now come down through Main Street, pound down our Main Street day after day after day. Maybe they won't, maybe they'll go straight across to one fifty-six. I also think the Blue Mound Road East Extension looks like a great idea. Right now, I mean, Hasslet Parkway is going to be a great relief for, for our residents. Another east-west way through town for us, but also for the traffic that comes through our town from west of us. But this also gives a, a route for people that want to continue down Blue Mound Road, that they can go all the way to the freeway. Also ties in with Harmon now and gives another really short route to I thirty-five for our, our care waste subdivision, which is on Harmon. So those two, I see those are the two that are the preferred two, and I agree, those two look great. And we should at least try to get in the, get in the loop, try to get approved by the county. The county's been very, very cooperative and worked with us on a lot of major things, including helping us with Hasslet Parkway. So I have a, I, I'd like the idea of continuing to work with them on road projects. So there's my two cents.
Well, and, and the overriding theme here is fifty cents on the dollar. So instead of us having to come up with the money for the whole thing, if, if we can be part of this bond program that the county's putting forth, yeah, yeah, it's costing us, you know, four, four million plus, but it, it's saving us the same amount of money also.
This is Mayor Prochem, I guess. Certainly Keller Hassett is, you know, that's, that's probably number one. The second one though, about extending Blue Mound Road East. You know, that's, well, it could create some circulation, you know, from the frontage road down this new section of road to Harmon Road and then back up to Hassa Parkway. You know, would put more traffic on to Blue Mound Road, the rest of the existing part of the road, which I know the Mr. Pettigo is improving a great proportion of that, but that still leaves a sizable portion past Maxwell Estates all the way to one fifty-six. And the state will improve that intersection. And then maybe a North Glen project will improve part of it on the west side. But still, that would be leaving a sizable portion of the Blue Mound Road that's going to need some assistance if we're going to dump very much traffic on that existing road, or what's left of it. So, you know, I think we'd have to look at upping the priority on, on improving that road as well if we went with this number two.
I'm.
So are you thinking just the one then, Warren? Because all others are really quite a bit more costly.
No, I, no, I'm saying, let's put it out there. I'm just saying, we're going to have to give the rest of Blue Mound Road some faster help, I think, if we, if that one gets approved.
So Blue Mound is, it, sorry.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead, Trish.
Well, isn't Blue Mound Road one of these other projects that Travis has given us? And isn't it, it looks like it's twenty-one million? Am I, am I understanding that Travis, twenty-one million?
Yes, estimated cost is twenty-one million to expand that to the four lane section across the city.
And that was too big a chunk, that was too big a chunk for the commissioner to even consider. He, he, he got excited with, with the particulars of both these two, just repeating what Jim told us earlier. And, and he especially liked the fact that we were only asking for nine million out of the two hundred million that he has available in, in this rough, rough estimate of the bond, the, the county bond. So you've got a valid point, Warren, but like I said earlier, on a different topic, it's an incremental increase or improvement. And, and I think it's the best we can hope for. And then part of our east-west issues, I think we all are hoping and praying are going to go away when Hasslet Parkway is completed and people have an option, they've got a four lane option to go east-west. And maybe that'll pull some of the traffic off of Blue Mound. But just being, being able to get over to the frontage road on thirty-five as opposed to having to, to go, you know, to go, what is that? South on, on Harmon and, and then left at the next stop sign, it, it's a quicker access to get to the frontage road. I mean, you know that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I, I'm, I'm for it. I'm just saying, I think we'll have to move improving Blue Mound Road up on our strategic plan.
Okay, my question was if they say, if they come back and say, we'll only approve one, will we get the option of picking the one we want? Or will they say, we want to do Keller Hassett and not Blue Mound, or Blue Mound, not Keller Hassett? How might that work?
So somebody else chime in too. My understanding is, is they were going to put together a committee and they were going to select the projects that they wanted to, to do. So we, we can list number one and number two, and that's our recommendation as a city with our resolution. I, I think we need to be prepared for the possibility that they may say, well, we're only going to, we're only going to do one of those two, and it's going to be number two. I don't know that they're going to give us another option, you know, to do one or the other. We've already prioritized it, and then they're going to make their, their call. That's what I took away from that meeting. Jim, Travis, do you have any, any thoughts otherwise?
I mean, ultimately, Hasslet has the final say. If, if they don't pick the highest priority that Hasslet has, you can say, thanks, but no thanks. So I think you, you would put these two projects forward and, and see what they say. And I think the, the feeling I got from Commissioner Fickers was both of them have his support.
It's going to be really hard to turn down, if they do come back and just say, we're going to do number two, it's going to be hard to turn it down at, at fifty percent. You know, so it's probably a good, a good idea either way.
I, I think the commissioner's always listened to the city. And if his state has preferences one over the other, I think he would, he would, he would actually do that.
Great, well, can I make a motion then?
Yes, ma'am. Somebody has to go to school tomorrow.
I move City Council authorize staff to recommend two projects, the Keller Hassett Extension and the Blue Mound East Extension to be considered by or in the Tarrant County Bond Program.
And, and my bad, could I ask you to amend that, Tanya? And include bringing back a resolution at the next meeting, e, e, either, either in consent or if you want to look at it. We can always pull it from consent. I would say to, to bring back a resolution for council approval at the next meeting.
Yes, and to bring back a resolution for, for council at the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I will second, and I wonder if Councilmember Memorial would also amend her motion to prioritize the Keller Hassett Extension.
We want to say our first and our second, how do you?
Is that, is that what you're looking for, Trish?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The priority number one being the Keller Hassett Extension and, and priority number two, the Blue Mound East Extension.
And I'm assuming you'll, you'll amend your second then?
Yes, I will.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, good work. Twelve L, discuss, consider an act awarding a contract for RFB two thousand and twenty-one zero zero two Main Street Repairs.
All right, we got some good news on this bid that came in from the project savings on the Intermodal Street Repairs, which was a little bit under seventy-nine thousand dollars. We put out the Main Street Repairs, Pavcon out of Arlington, Texas, I believe, was the low bid on that, a little under sixty-three thousand dollars. Staff recommends awarding the contract for Main Street Repairs. That's going to be a, a big section just north of First Street and the one panel between FM one fifty-six and First Street to be repaired, utilizing the closure that is right now. Not sure if anybody's been down in Old Town lately, but the traffic has nearly subsided to nothing. So it's, it's the perfect time to do these repairs. So staff recommends awarding the contract to Pavcon.
Questions or comments for Travis? Anybody ready for a motion then?
I move the City Council to award the contract for RFC two thousand and twenty-one dash double oh two Main Street Repairs to Pavcon and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement.
Is there a second?
Five seconds.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you. Twelve M, Mike, discuss, consider an act on ordinance zero zero five two thousand and twenty-one, adding a new section of one point one zero point zero zero three to Article one point one zero Boards and Commissions of the Hassett Code of Ordinances regarding alternate member participation and voting in board commission, board and commission meetings. Is this Rob?
I'm, I'm happy to, I didn't.
I wasn't sure.
No, if, if you would like me to, I'll let me run with it. I know, and the original request kind of came from you, as council may remember. I, I did a memo to the mayor and council back in January with kind of an analysis on this. And based on that, put together the proposed ordinance that's attached. Scoot up to the screen again, make sure y'all can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. So the, the issue, the issue that we came across is the city's practice of having alternate members appointed to your board, which is not an unusual practice. But what, what was a little unusual is that it's the level of participation of your alternate board members. They, in, in, in some of your meetings, for instance, P and Z, your alternate members participate in the meetings, discussions, and, and actually vote on items coming before the board. And that can lead to some confusion and potential problems. Certainly in my opinion, and talked with Jim and Wes about this and the mayor. And, and so I think this could use, this issue could use to be clarified. In the past, I don't want to belabor this too long, but you know, Hasslet originally had a planning commission and then a zoning commission that got merged into one commission. And a long time ago, the thought was people who were willing to serve on those commissions, didn't want to tell any of them, thanks, but no thanks. So we had a large number serve on them. Then over time, the Planning and Zoning Commission as a combined commission was reduced down to five members, which is, which is the norm and, and more in line with, with what most cities do. But you want to have some alternates who can serve if you have a regular member who is, is absent. So we have those alternate members. In, in most cities that I deal with, the alternate members do not participate in meetings unless they are filling in or a vacancy of a, of a primary member who's vacant. There certainly is rationale for your alternate members attending those meetings so that they are up and, and primed on your development issues and know what's going on, and they see and hear the discussions and the projects and things that are, that are going on. So certainly not, and, and, and I, first of all, I'm not pushing this really, I, I, I'm just presenting it. So, but I think that the, the thought process is we, we want those people to be, have that, that background and knowledge so that when they do serve, they're, they're able to serve in a, in a, in a good capacity. So, but, but my issue with, with our current practice is drawing the line on that level of participation. So what I proposed in this ordinance was that the alternate members are certainly free to attend all meetings of the board. And Councilmember Hillborn suggested that we add the word open in there so that they, it's just clear that they can attend the open meetings of the board. But that, that unless they're serving to fill a vacancy, that they do not participate in the closed or executive session. And I'll cover, I'll cover why that's in there, but I, I agree that that is a, that's. that's really kind of needed, um, to, to clarify that. And then that they don't participate in, particularly don't participate in the vote on matters, um, for the board unless they're serving, um, in place, place of, uh, an absent regular member. Uh, the level of participation in the discussion is something I think that we may want to talk about tonight. I drew, I drew this up, if you noticed the ordinance draft, it says, "An alternate member, uh, may not participate in the deliberation or vote on matters before the board unless they're serving in place of, of a member." And I've had discussion with the mayor and Councilmember Member Hillborn about what that really means. And in my mind, deliberation is, is when we reach a point like on our agenda where somebody's made a motion and a second, and then there's deliberation between council members about that matter, um, as opposed to just general discussion when the agenda item is introduced by the board chairman and, and there's, and there's discussion. I, so in my mind, there's a difference between discussion, deliberation. Um, but we may want to clarify exactly what level of involvement you're comfortable with or you want your alternates to participate in. Um, so that, this draft ordinance can certainly, if you're in favor of approving it, we can tweak it and, uh, clarify some of those issues to where you're comfortable with it as, as needed. Um, and I'll pitch it to anybody here that wants to join in or add anything to that.
This is the mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, thank you for taking that summary, Rob, I appreciate that. Um, I would very much recommend that we allow the alternates to participate in the discussion up to, as, as Rob just mentioned, up to the point a, a motion is made. Now, whether that's further discussion or deliberation, maybe we need to define that or maybe we just need to say, alternates can participate up to the, the time where a motion is made. But from that point on, it's the people who are voting that would be in the discussion after the motion's made and seconded. And, and maybe I'm beating a dead horse here. If you guys think I'm way out of line here, I, I think that's the way our folks are used to, to participating, to tell them, for example, the, the other extreme would be, well, no, you don't sit on the dius, you don't participate, you don't sit in the round table, whatever, you have to sit with the audience. No, that, that's not what I would like to convey, but it's not important what I want to convey, it's important what the council wants to convey. So, I, I'm, I'm open to suggestion, but, but I kind of agree with what Rob just said. As, as long as we, we let them, we let them participate up to the point where we're actually making a decision. And once the motion's made, then the alternate, unless they're replacing a regular member who's absent, the alternate does not participate from that point forward.
Um, this is Councilmember Morrow, and I agree 100% because I was, when I first read this and I was like, can't participate in deliberation, what's, can't ask questions, can't, you know, um, discuss, but a citizen can have a comment. So, I really liked that the term, the deliberation is after the motion has been made. But up until that point, they can ask clarifying questions, they can, um, discuss and be a part of it. So, I, and I do think that it, it is a little confusing sometimes. As someone who served on the proxy board, which alternates voted as they could vote as part of the group, I think that's what our, our bylaw said. And then P and Z, where you only voted if, you know, someone was absent. I do think there's some confusion, I'm reading, you know, the minutes and it, it tells me who voted for what, but I don't know who's the alternate, who's not. And so, I think this does help, um, with transparency and, and people understanding the voting. So, I, I like everything that, how you've presented it, is my opinion.
Yeah. The other thing I would, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Mayor Protem, uh, having been a, a chairman of a, a board, uh, like, uh, uh, and Tanya's experience, I think we'd have a hard time recruiting alternates if we told them they couldn't participate in the, in the discussion. I, I don't think we'd have any. So, uh, I'm not sure how we got away from it, but that's the way it used to be, was alternates could participate in discussions but couldn't make a motion or vote unless they were acting, uh, on, uh, as, as one of the primary members. But back then, we had nine members and so there was almost always, uh, uh, somebody absent or regular member absent. So, it was very seldom that, uh, an alternate wasn't acting in that official capacity as, uh, one of the primary members. But I think the wording could be changed as, as you've mentioned, mayor and as Tanya mentioned, uh, to give them freedom to, uh, educate themselves by asking questions, but, uh, not to make the motion and not vote if they're acting as an alternate.
I think that's an excellent point, Rob. In our discussion earlier today, I don't think we talked about making the motion. So, that, I think that's another point to be made, uh, to clarify. And then the, the last thing that, that Rob and I discussed very briefly today was, I, I think, Jim, and this is more for you and, and for staff, I think once the meeting starts, it might, it might help the chair or the president, in, in whichever case that is, to, to re, whoever the recording individual is for that meeting, the, the staff person, the, the Hasslet paid employee, to remind the chair or the president that, yes, you've got all five of your members here tonight, the alternates don't vote or so and so is replacing so and so, so, you know, that one can vote, but this other alternate cannot. Just to remind the chair or the president, uh, of, of how it is. And, and I, I, I think our people are trying to do the right thing, but we just sometimes forget, you know, it slips our mind and, and somebody votes when, when they possibly shouldn't have. Does that make sense?
Certainly, mayor, if the, uh, the policy has changed, we certainly will begin the meeting, indicate to the chair that all members are present and the alternate, uh, can participate but not make a motion or vote. And, and we certainly do that, once you change the policy, we can do this.
That, that was my intent with having this item on the agenda, uh, to, to make it better for everybody.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, on the, it states in here that alternate members shall not participate in any closed executive session. Um, for clarification purposes, are we saying that they can be present in the executive session? Or are they, so we're saying they can't be present?
I, I think Rob's saying that they cannot participate, that they would not go into the room where the exec was going on, is how I interpreted that. Rob, is that correct?
Yes, but I was just jotting that down, excellent point, uh, council member. Uh, I, I, in order to be clear, which is what we're trying to do, I think we add, I think we add that verbiage, that an alternate member shall not be present nor participate in closed session.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that, that was a little confusing to me.
Always good to have extra set of eyes on these things, and I think that's an excellent point. Yeah, that, that the intent, as, as you know, uh, from our executive sessions, council, uh, you know, executive session, there's only certain topics that we're allowed to go in to discuss in executive session, one of which is to seek legal advice from your, from your attorney. Um, if there are people who are not authorized to be in executive session, you lose the attorney client privilege because the discussion has occurred with people who aren't permitted to be in there. So, that's primarily the reason I think it's important to specify, um, you know, this and these rules as, as we're tweaking them, so.
So, Rob, we've, we've been giving you different ideas and, and different suggestions on changes. Do you want to, can, do you want to try to read that back or would you rather just bring it back? And, and I'm, I'm not trying to delay this, but, uh, may, maybe that's the best thing, whichever you're comfortable with.
I, well, it's whatever y'all are comfortable with. I, I've, I've made notes, I mean, the, the change on the executive session language to that the alternate members shall not be present nor participate in the closed session. Um, other change, that alternate, alternate members may attend all open meetings of the board or committee to clarify, to, to go in line with that executive session discussion. But the main one, y'all discussed in, kind of in the first sentence, modifying it that alternate members shall not participate in any discussion or deliberation after the vote is made, that they shall not make motions and they shall not vote on matters before the board. So, if y'all are comfortable with that, I can make these changes to approve it tonight. If you'd rather see it...
What I, what I thought you said just then was after the vote is made, you meant motion is made, correct?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I, I may have misheard you.
No, 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 I, I have written down motion, but I probably did say vote, I'm sorry. Uh, so, if y'all are comfortable with that, you can approve it tonight with those changes and I'll make changes to the document, uh, if you, if there, since those are several changes, if you'd rather see it again, continue it, I'll make the changes, we'll put it on exec, uh, we'll put it on consent agenda. And if it looks good to all of you, then you can just approve it at the next meeting on consent. It's totally, totally up to y'all, how you want, what you would prefer.
I'm okay with approving it tonight with, because it sounds like he got it, the changes we talked about really perfectly.
Does anyone have a problem with approving it tonight with those changes?
Well, this is Mayor Protem, I, I think we need to include in there, and I didn't hear him say this, what they can do. Uh, we've only put in there what they can't do. Can we say, participate in discussion, but not then the rest of it?
Sure, so the last sentence in, in this section says, you know, because I, I, I also wanted to have that, I didn't want it to be all no, 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 no in this section. So, it says, "An alternate member may attend all open meetings of the board and committee to which they serve as an alternate to see and hear the business of the board or committee." And then we can say, "And participate in the discussion prior to any motion being made."
Uh, I'd, I'd rather see that go up at the beginning of the sentence, the, the part about, uh, alternates may, I don't have it in front of me anymore, but, you know, uh, alternates may participate in discussion, but may not motion or participate in deliberation after, uh, the motion or vote on the motion. Unless, you know, they're acting, uh, you know, you know, in their capacity as a member replacement or whatever the right term is.
You're muted, Rob.
I'm sorry, this is...
Oh, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to say, there's, there's no urgency in this matter, as far as I can tell. And so, having it on the consent agenda would allow council to all have the opportunity to review the matter, and that might be the best way to go.
And, and it takes, uh, Rob off the hotspot too, so, yeah, I, I think that's...
But that's what made it so fun. Okay, so, so I, I moved that, um, we are directing our city attorney to draft this ordinance as with the changes agreed to tonight, and it will appear on a, as a consent agenda item at our next meeting.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Harold, and any further discussion? Roll call vote, Warren, Rob?
Aye.
Harold Williams?
Aye.
Jessica Clark?
Aye.
Patricia Hillborn?
Aye.
Tanya Morrow?
Aye.
12N, discuss, consider an act, excuse mayor and council absence as if any. Anybody have one you want to talk about? Hearing done 13, receive report from public improvement district subcommittee. Rob?
Yes, sir, uh, we took a lot of action tonight, uh, with regard to Sweetgrass. The only thing I'd add basically is, at our next meeting on the 15th, we'll have the items that we referred to tonight, which is, uh, approval of a reimbursement agreement, which is the actual agreement that says the city will reimburse the developer or the things that were agreed to in the service and assessment plan and, and how that works. And then also, uh, hold the public hearing that you called tonight, um, on the 15th and approve the actual final service and assessment plan and the levy of the assessments on that property, so. And, and we may or may not need a subcommittee meeting, uh, in advance of that. Uh, when I get the documents from, uh, when I get the documents, I'll forward them to the subcommittee, um, members and, and we may or may not need a subcommittee meeting in advance of that. And, anybody have anything else that they want to add from the subcommittee?
Trish, Warren, anything you want to add?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Yeah, your subcommittee's really been working hard this past couple of weeks and, uh, appreciate every, appreciate everybody's, uh, help in getting this done.
Thank you, sir, any questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing done 14, executive session, as, as I noted earlier, I think that was item 10, 10B, but we'll go as, as printed here. Uh, City Council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551-071 of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to the provision of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, City Council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section 551-072 Government Code, deliberations about real property, tower site, ground lease amendment 503 Schoolhouse Road. I don't believe we need to, I'll just read it, we'll check and we'll get in there. Section 551-072 Government Code, deliberations about real property, property acquisition for Hasslet Parkway Project. At this time, we'll close the open part of the meeting, I've got 10:31 and we'll go to exec and the mayor's gonna have to take about a two-minute potty break and, and route. So, I'll see you over in exec shortly.
Counsel, if you're just spoofing us.
Right, I already seen he's online.
I figured out what I was doing wrong.
Oh, well, there's always room for improvement, right? Even for...
Lots, lots on my side.
You're gonna beat the mayor.
Harold, you're there.
Just say to yourself, "It's not that late and everything be fine." Still gotta go feed my horses, they're wondering what the hell happened to me.
Poor baby. Anya, I just love your bookcases.
Thank you. I have more books, I have too many books.
I was at an antique book sale. Yeah, me neither. I was at an antique place where they were selling old books and the guy said, "So are you a collector?" And I said, "No." He said, "Are you an accumulator?" And I said, "Yes."
I see four out of five. Harold said he wasn't coming or going to be late. I'm ready to go back if y'all are. Let's reconvene the open part of the meeting. I've got 10:59. The number 15, consider take action resulting from executive session, there is none. 16, anyone have anything for future agendas? Somebody's breathing hard. Okay, hearing none? We're adjourned at 10:59. Good work tonight, we got a lot done.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm excited about those Tarrant County projects, wow.
Well, I can't talk about that right now, so we'll see you tomorrow.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Bye-bye.